Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 19, 2025, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have each of you with us. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Paris.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner May. Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
Okay, we'll now move on to the approval of the minutes of the February 19, 2025, City Commission meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. This time, we will have our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we are asking to continue consent item 8J, request for a 3.2-foot reduction from the required side yard setback and reduction of permit fees for construction of a single-family affordable home at 615 Aberdeen Street. We will bring this item back.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said change.
That was 8J, oh yeah, okay. All right, we have a motion and we have a second. No questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number six, which is our presentation. And item six A is our first presentation. It's a proclamation and key to the city to Bill Green Jewelers, presented by Mayor Derrick
All right, as you all can see, we've got a family here. I believe that Daytona Beach community embraces its family and certainly our small business owners and families that have been so dedicated to our community for so long. So tonight, I'm going to be sharing a proclamation that pays homage to your longstanding dedication to our community and service. In recognition of Bill Green Jewelers, whereas Bill Green Jewelers has been more than just a jewelry store, it has been a place where families found keepsakes to cherish for generations. From engagement rings that marked the start of lifelong love stories to anniversary gifts passed down through families, the store has played a role in countless milestones. And whereas more than a business, Bill Green Jewelers has been a gathering place where customers weren't just customers, they became friends. Over six decades, the store fostered deep relationships, creating a space where people felt welcome, valued, and appreciated. And whereas the store built its reputation on honesty, integrity, and quality, whether it was custom designs, repairs, or helping someone find the perfect piece, Bill Green Jewelers became a name people trusted for both expertise and care. And whereas from engagements and anniversaries, birthdays, to just because gifts, Bill Green Jewelers has been at the heart of some of life's most joyous and emotional milestones. Every piece sold carried meaning, marking a moment in time that will never be forgotten. And whereas, as a family-owned store, Bill Green Jewelers stood as a testament to the power of small business and the importance of local commerce. For 60 years, it remained a cornerstone of Daytona Beach, proving that passion, dedication, and community support can create something truly special. Now, therefore, I Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of the City of Daytona Beach, and on behalf of the City Commission and the City of Daytona Beach, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 19, 2025, as Bill Green Jewelers Day in the City of Daytona Beach and thank them for their 60 years of dedicated service to the citizens of our great city. And we would also like to say that you've given out many mementos and marked many milestones. And while we're not in the business of jewelry, as you are, the best, most sacred and cherished piece of jewelry that we have expresses, on behalf of all the people that you serve, we say thank you with the key to the city.
Thank you. See my key. Okay, which way should we go?
Let's turn. It's coming.
He's gonna come and take a picture of y'all, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
I'll take it for you, sir.
This is very nice of you.
Who is anyone who could introduce everyone for us?
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, I'm gonna ask her to introduce and just say a few words if you would, don't mind.
I have had the pleasure of having such loyal employees, Mike Flueg, Tony Pollitt, Sally Landris, and Chris Lavender. So lucky to have them, and they've helped make the store better.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 6B, which is the proclamation of Annual Government Finance Professionals Week, March 17 through the 21st of 2025. Natalia Eckhart, the Chief Financial Officer, to receive the proclamation.
A lot of times, the folks who count the money are not the folks who are seen, but they have to make sure that every dollar and every nickel is accounted for appropriately. And I appreciate what you all do. This proclamation reads, "In recognition of Government Finance Professionals Week, whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is a professional association founded in 1937 and serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges, and universities, special districts, and private firms, whereas the FGFOA is dedicated to being your professional source by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, and information. And whereas the Government Finance Professionals Week, sponsored by the FGFOA and all of its members, member governing organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services that they provide to our state and our community. And whereas during this week, government finance professionals through the state order will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now, therefore, I Derrick L. Henry, Mayor, and on behalf of Commissioner Paris, Commissioner Strickland, Commissioner May, Commissioner Cantu, Commissioner Henry, and Commissioner Reed, do hereby proclaim March 17 through the 21st, 2025, as Government Finance Professionals Week in the City and County of Volusia, and I extend our appreciation to all government finance professionals throughout the state and here in the City of Daytona Beach for their hard work, dedication, and leadership."
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thanks for sharing that book list.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number seven, which is citizen comments. During this time, citizens have opportunity to address the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda. And I have one speaker, Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. Two items, B and A. B, with regard to lawyers, I want to ask, where are we with the Avalon Park lawyers with the water and sewer and Ormond? I know we're supposed to be, from what I hear in negotiations, because the Ormond is not ready or willing or able to provide the water and sewer for Avalon Park, and I think we're supposed to be suing. So I'd like to know where we are with that. And K, the FDOT and the medians. I know FDOT pays us to maintain the medians, and then we pay somebody else to maintain our medians. The maintenance of the medians on A1A, when we had them, was not well done. We rely on our tourism for a heck of a lot of income. It is great, it's a clean industry, we don't want to lose it, but we do need to maintain beachside. So whatever we do with this maintenance and whatever they do with A1A when they're finished, I would ask some of you guys to go out and drive those curvy lanes that they've now put in there. It's like a roller coaster, it's no longer straight A1A, it's wavy. So whatever they do with the landscaping, please maintain it as best as possible. Thank you.
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Moved to accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. No additional questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 9A, which is our public hearings and quad judicial hearings. Item 9A is a Growth Management and Planning Department Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, Articles 6 and 11, to correct, update, and modify standards to better manage development in the city, amending Section 6.2. C and 6.2. G to add provisions regarding required parking spaces for compact automobile, bicycle, and motorcycle spaces, as well as stacked parking for multifamily uses, amending Section 6.10. E1 to add provisions related to off-site signage, amending Section 6.11. C.7 to correct neighborhood compatibility standards related to exterior lighting, amending Section 6.15. A.9 to update the in-loo fees for tree replacement or mitigation, amending Section 11.4. B to remove waterfront property from block face averages and add depth of lot, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Strickland.
I don't have any speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the commission? All right, here are none. All those who are in favor of this motion, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 9B, it's Growth Management Planning Department, LPGA Golf Villas, Small Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Section 163.3187 Florida statutes, with regard to 36.5-plus or minus acres of property generally located southwest of the intersection of International Golf Drive and Champions Drive, amending the future land use map designation for this property from golf, office transition, and retail to level one residential, amending the future land use element neighborhood T development policy to allow for limited residential development of the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May.
Okay, I do have a number of speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Trish Hayden, and on deck is Matthew West. Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna have the presentation first.
Thanks. If you don't mind, just, I think it's our normal protocol, Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole, One Daytona Boulevard. Parker Minchenberg, and I think Matthew West also signed up, and we're gonna, I think, sort of give you guys a presentation with all three of us saying a few things. I know we've got a group of folks here, so normally I don't give you guys a full presentation, but we're going to tonight, just to make sure we have a sort of a, at least a complete understanding of where we're coming from on this project.
Mr. Merrill, are you planning on zoning on both the comp plan and the PD at the same time?
I'd like to do the comp plan, this item only.
Okay.
Sure. So, some of the materials are in your head, but I wanted to have in front of you, when I talked about certain aspects of this, the first two pages are something I'm gonna talk about, and then the rest of them are Parker and Matthew. You know, this is, again, good question, Ben. What we're here to talk about on this particular item is a comprehensive plan amendment. You guys have seen me presenting on a lot of comprehensive amendments over the years, and I think nine times out of 10, or maybe more, we're making a change to the comprehensive plan in order to accommodate a different zoning category that we're asking for development approval for. This is kind of the flip side of that, so it's an interesting case, and I want to make sure we understood the context of this agenda item, which is the comprehensive plan amendment. The first page shows you, on the left, the existing future land use map, the City of Daytona Beach, and on the right, what we're proposing. So the left hand is a mixture of uses, and it would almost seem kind of odd that it's mixed this way, but for a sort of historical context, I believe this figuration was very close to what was approved by the LBGA DRI back in the, I think, the late 80s. And so that translated over to your comprehensive plan when the DRI was dissolved. And that's why it reads this way, but I think that the vision from the DRI, and if you guys haven't experienced the development of regional impact, it's a kind of a superzoning, if you will, that in that time was approved by the Department of Community Affairs, the Regional Planning Council, and the commission, normally through a planned development as the vehicle to do it, but it was a much bigger PD, if you will. In this case, I think the vision was that that corner, that I think most of you are familiar with, is a pretty heavily traveled corner, and so they proposed retail there, maybe a convenience store and thing that would maybe shorten trips for people that were had to go further to get what convenience item they needed. And then the office transition, the yellow, the brownish-yellow area there, you know, has a mixture of things, and I'm gonna read you what it says in the comprehensive plan, just so it kind of takes away any misconception about it. So the retail area in red there, it reads, "An area composed primarily of retail establishments, but typically containing other commercial uses such as amusements, located in planned zoning districts. The floor area ratio shall not exceed three, and the residential density shall not exceed 40 dwelling units per acre." So as most of these categorical descriptions have, there's usually a ceiling of how much stuff you can do. In this case, it's pretty clear that it's focused on retail, right, stores, but it does have a residential dwelling allowance as well. This one's the big piece, which is the office transition, which is "an area primarily for office, public schools, and multifamily uses. The floor area ratio shall not exceed three, the residential density shall not exceed 40 dwelling units per acre." So I could tell you without doubt that that's not what we propose to do on this site. So the reason why we're here is, when you see the right-hand side, is to change those three colors into one color, which is level one residential. Level one residential squarely matches up with the existing zoning, if you look at the next page. SFR 5, which you see in several other places around here, it's either PD or SFR 5 in this area. And so in order for the development to occur, the zoning in the comprehensive plan have to match, and that's why we're here. So we first went to the city, and I think we're pretty close to being able to develop what we want to develop under the SFR 5, but the city pointed out that we've got these three mixed zone, land use classifications, and they need to match up. So this first item is critical to us being able to do anything on this piece of land, really, which I know you guys have provisions in your comp plan and otherwise that say you have to be able to let people do something on their land, right? So right now, we really can't do anything unless some action is taken about this comprehensive plan. We could come back and say, we want to do one of these things that I just described to you, the two uses, the residential and the office transition, which includes medical office and apartments, but that's not what we want to do. So tonight, I'm hoping that you guys will see your way to base keeping things the way they are, in terms of the zoning. Our companion request here is a planned development. Now, you guys do a lot of those, and not to go into the details of the planned development, you guys know how it works, there's a plan, and then there's a written agreement that talks about what you can and can't do, and what the parameters are. Knowing, two years ago when we started this, or longer, that several folks were gonna be interested in what we were doing out there, we decided we wanted to come in with a negotiated zoning rather than a straight zoning, which was already there. We could develop it under this, if you wanted us to, the existing zoning. So we started a process, meeting with the neighbors. We've had two major meetings, and Parker's gonna go through, I think, better than I can, with a timeline that sort of shows what we've been doing in a sequence of changes along the way that would be implemented in the planned development. Those things wouldn't be able to happen, I don't think, with the straight zoning, but if that's what you guys would prefer, we can still do that. I think when we started to do some of the numbers, because we taught, everything's in maximums, right, when you're talking about comp plan and land use, the office retail at 40 dwelling, the office transition at 40 units per acre, plus the retail at 40 units per acre, could be 620 units. Now, that's a maximum. So in order to try to, especially with all of the activity and interest about this, we did our due diligence, if you will, and Parker's gonna show you a plan of, if we did apartments, what it would look like. So you have to be able to fit it, you know, there's a maximum, and then there's what can you fit on the properties. He'll talk to you about that, I think it's in the 300 or 400 unit range. And then, you know, the level one residential land use that we're asking for here allows eight units per acre, so far less, but that still yielded 292 units. We went a step further and said we were gonna further limit by text amendment the future land use, so it's even more restrictive than the level one, to get us only 120 units, so less than half of what's allowed in that lower-level residential. So every step along the way, it's been going smaller and smaller and less and less, and we're gonna talk, Parker will talk about sort of the geographical shrinkage of this that's happened along the way, and I think you guys will find it interesting. I know you've been hearing from a lot of people, but you probably haven't heard that part of it and the part that Parker's gonna get into. With that, Parker, I guess I'll let you and Matthew talk through, and I'd like to say, Mayor, that once they get done, we'd like to have any questions you guys have from the presentation, and then I'd like to have the opportunity to have responses to questions raised by others, as is the normal protocol, I think.
Good evening. Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. I'm the design engineer on the project, hadn't tried using this since last time I was here. Okay, so this is an aerial representation of the original site, and you'll see at the top of the image, there's a townhouse boundary, and that coincides with practice hole three. You'll see practice hole two. I'm gonna be showing you a short game practice remodel of that hole here in a minute. You can see the existing driving range, and then where practice hole one is, is the single-family area boundary. The parcel fronts on International Golf Drive and Champions Drive, so across the street from the driving range is the parking lot for the golf clubhouse. So in the original plan, we had two parcels. This first parcel coincides with practice hole three, and we came in with 54 townhomes. And I'm gonna show you the next slide. This is sort of the lower parcel, practice hole one, and it was 109 single-family lots. So we had our first neighborhood meeting at the Holiday Inn out at LPGA, and Rob got there late, I was there early, and there was about 100 people outside, the room held like 100. So Rob came in and said, if everybody can't hear what's going on, we're gonna have to continue the meeting. So we ended up, this hole two, which the golf course is gonna be, was looking at, changing into a state-of-the-art practice hole, where it wouldn't be like it currently is with three practice holes, this would be a chip-and-put, short-game practice hole. So as I get a little further into this, this use kind of goes to hole number three, and I'll get into that in a second. So after we had our first meeting, we had a couple of larger neighborhood meetings, then we had probably four or five lesser meetings with Commissioner Cantu and sort of an abbreviated group from LPGA. So I showed you a few slides back, the 50-some townhomes. The first thing that we did after a couple of these meetings is, we looked at doing single-family for the upper parcel or practice hole three. So we did this layout, and we had some folks that lived kind of to the right of this, and there was discussion about that roadway lined up with their living room window and streetlights going in. So we adjusted the roadway alignment such that, such that the lights didn't shine into the, kind of hit on a lot line instead of going right into one of the units. So then, we presented the single-family portion, and Mayor, I think you might have been somewhat involved in this, but the staff at that time said there was an interest in a public park. So you'll see on the image there, on Champions Drive, we set aside about an acre, it was gonna have a tot lot and a pavilion, and it was gonna be open to the public. At our, so this was the park plan that we presented. So at one of our meetings, the residents didn't really want a public park, as you can imagine, people from outside LPGA could come in and use the park. So through that, we changed this area to, it's actually wooded, so we agreed to keep the existing wooded area there. This particular slide happens to be the one I spoke about earlier, where we adjusted the roadway to make sure the headlights at night didn't go into the unit. So these are a couple of the meetings that we had in 2023 with Commissioner Cantu and Carol Killian, who's behind me here. And then we had our redo of our first neighborhood meeting at the Baptist Church, and I think it was a couple hundred people in attendance.
Can I interrupt for a minute? Those meetings that we had wasn't just Commissioner Cantu and Carol Killian, it was with all the HOA.
Yes, it was with the group.
All the HOA.
Yeah, whenever I say that, it was with a group, it wasn't individual, so. So, again, after some meetings with commissioners and others, we agreed to eliminate what initially was the multifamily townhouse area and practice hole three, and concentrate all the development in the lower parcel that now would include practice hole one and two. And there was a number of different reasons, some of the adjacent folks to the north on the other parcel, and traffic concerns. So this was the plan we presented, where we went down to 124 single-family units. And I want to kind of focus you in the upper right-hand corner, that's where the one-acre park was, and we had an access point that would connect across from one of the driveways into the LPGA parking area. So we were at 124 lots at that point, and one of the other things we agreed to do, we had 40-foot product, so this plan, the exterior lots that front on the existing road were 50-foot width, and then across the street next to the driving range were 40-foot product. street next to the driving range were 40-foot product. And this was the practice hole for, which would now be the hole number three, practice hole. This is a chipping and putting practice area, which is a commitment by the golf course owner. When we eliminate the other two practice holes, they were gonna take hole number three and turn it into a short game practice area. So we met with the smaller group, and as a result of that, you'll notice up in the upper right-hand corner, previously I talked about there being a public park there. Again, kind of listening to the residents, they didn't like that traffic flow going out through the north. So what we ended up doing is, we ended up putting a couple acres in preservation, so as part of the PD, that upper right-hand corner treat area would remain natural and, you know, provide a passive wooded area, help screen the development. So this is their current plan, 120 single-family lots, 50-foot product along the main road, existing 40-foot product across the street. We had another neighborhood meeting and presented this to the residents, and I would say probably 50 to 100 neighbors attended. So that's the kind of final version that you guys have in your packet. One of the other things that was discussed, we're leaving a minimum of 25 feet, but you can see along the existing roadway, the buffer gets as big as 50 feet. There's also street trees in the right-of-way, but there was some concern about seeing the backs of homes from the highway, and I think the other concern was the developer, when he builds his houses, liked the idea of providing a screen where when you're in your backyard, you don't see the traffic. So a little hard to see on this, but we have a landscape plan that's included in your package, where we're putting a continuous Viburnum hedge along the rear of all the lots, and that's not just along the road frontage, it's also along the driving range frontage. And then we're planting hardwoods, oak trees, and magnolias in the back 10 feet of the lots, that coupled with the street trees in the road, the tree buffer that's remaining, plus landscaping, we feel provides a great screen for people on the outside looking in, and for folks that are in their backyard that don't want to see the traffic going So this was, I was asked, you know, if you did a layout on these two comp plan parcels, how many apartments could you get? And this is more of a cartoon than a plan, but this sort of demonstrates a number of 24-unit buildings and enough parking to support them. So some of the high points, we reduced the density from 54 townhouses and 109 single families, so a total of 163. The current ask is 120 units, single family, no multifamily, a 26% reduction. We dropped the townhomes, replaced with single family, eliminated the townhomes, eliminated the public park, and replaced it with that couple-acre natural treat area, eliminated the roadway connection to the northeast at Champions Drive, where the roadway would have connected up near the existing parking lot for the clubhouse. We modified, proposed modification to practice hole three to be a state-of-the-art short game practice area. Another thing that was of interest during the neighborhood meetings was construction traffic. So we agreed to have the construction traffic enter from kind of the left side of the drawing, so they didn't have to go all the way down the road, and we sort of set that up in the PD. And I'm sure Rob will talk more about this, but from the point we get approval, if we get approval, there'd be a two-and-a-half-year delay before the first residential CO could be had. During that time, the infrastructure we get built, maybe some model homes, but this was kind of reaction to, when are they going to widen the bridge, you know, when are they going to fix the roadway at LPGA? And this was kind of just a comparison, I won't go through it, but similar, the original plan, the current plan, and it talks about the things that we did. So with that, Matt West is up to talk to you guys about trips and traffic.
Thanks, Parker. I'm Matthew West with LTG Incorporated at 1450 West Granada Boulevard in Ormond Beach. I will start off by saying I am not a traffic engineer, I'm not a PE, I'm a transportation planner. Rob, early in what his part of the presentation to you, talked about what the comprehensive plan calls for as maximums on the property as currently designated. And he focused in on the retail parcel and the office transition parcel, and he talked about they would allow a floor area ratio of three. This is important, because typically in Volusia County, in most of the cities in Volusia County, when we look at zoning and future land use, the comp plan and the zoning map, what we are comparing at this stage, at the planning level stage of zoning and future land use, is the maximum theoretical trip generation of the zoning that's currently, and the land that's currently assigned, and comparing that trip generation to the proposed zoning and land use. And in this case, when we're trying to derive the maximum trip generation, we looked at the uses, and office transition and commercial retail allow a floor area ratio of three. What that means is, for every acre of land you have that's got an FAR of three, you get three acres of building area. And so that typically entails multiple, you have multiple-story buildings to accommodate that kind of intensity. And in this case, on the office transition, using that, and I think it's about 13.89 acres of office transition, applying an FAR of three could generate theoretically 1.8 million square feet of medical office. And then the little retail portion, once again, multiplied by the floor area ratio of three, would allow about 213,000 square feet of shopping center or retail. What that equates to, in the current, in the current designations, is about 85,000 daily trips. And in what, most of what planners and engineers focus on for traffic is the PM peak hour, the rush hour in the evening. And in that case, that development program could generate up to 8,108 PM peak hour trips. That's 8,108 trips in a, in a single hour in the PM. Let's see if I got this right. Now comparing that to what we are requesting, which is capping the property, the entire property, at 120 single-family dwelling units, would generate about 1,193 daily trips and 118 PM peak hour trips. So basically, by volunteering this cap and putting it in the neighborhood portion of the future land use, you're eliminating about 84,000 trips, and you're reducing the PM peak hour by almost 8,000 trips. The one thing is, part of that property is also designated as golf course, there is, and we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is a nationally recognized and respected document to help us calculate what types of trips and how many trips would be generated. And in this case, the remaining property of about 20.9 acres of golf course would generate about 78 daily trips and six peak hour trips. Now, when we're looking at this, the next step, did I skip over? I did not skip over, okay. One of the things we want to talk about is, what is this 120 single-family homes, if this is approved, what does it generate as revenue, and how does it, how does it address impacts to the roadway system, the trips that will be generated by these 120 homes? From a roadway impact fee standpoint, the city and the county have their own impact fee ordinance. And the, and if we use the current schedule that the city and the county have, the county impact fee for 120 single-family homes would generate about $655,000. That's paid to the city to offset the impacts, to the county, to offset the impacts to the county roads. The city's fee is about $45,600, and that's to address impacts to city roads. And that's based on an assumption that you have an average of a 2,000-square-foot single-family Now, that's, that's what we know, because impact fees are kind of a generalized evaluation of, of impacts and costs, that it's not, the impact fee is not based on detailed traffic studies. But in this case, should this property get rezoned and the future land use get changed, the next step would be providing a preliminary subdivision or plat, that's what Parker would do, and at that time, we would go through a concurrency traffic impact analysis. And that is a much more detailed and site-specific analysis. And the first thing we would be doing is, we would be negotiating the methodology with the city about how to, how to conduct that study, and what data that the city would require or accept. When that traffic study is submitted and is commented on by the county, and there's, there's some back and forth there on, on the actual study, when that study gets near completion, one of the things we have to do is estimate the traffic impact mitigation requirements called proportionate share. It's this development's trips that are being mitigated for having impacts on the roadway network. And it's a much more detailed analysis than an impact fee. And essentially, whichever of those two numbers, the impact fee, the impact fee amount or the prop share amount, whichever of those numbers is higher, that's what the development has to pay. And they can either pay it, or they can provide infrastructure improvements, like turn lanes, traffic signals, adding an additional through lane, there's all kinds of ways to mitigate your traffic impact. They could do that up to the amount required for proportionate share, instead of writing a check, in lieu of a check. And some examples of that is, you know, Buc-E's paid for the six-laning of the bridge and LPGA through, through the interchange, as part of their addressing capacity issues. Minto Latitude Margaritaville built the Timber Creek Road Extension and installed turn lanes on Williamson as part of their mitigation for traffic impacts. And Tamoka Town Center, and any money that's, that is provided for mitigation can be pipelined to a specific project that the community and the commission and the developer desire to have that money pipelined to. Now, I want to talk about the, there is a provision of, you know, talk, identifying road improvements that are upcoming. And although these two projects are not funded for construction, they are being brought forward by the county and DOT, so we're showing progress towards getting some roadway improvements to help mitigate or address impacts of all the traffic in that, in that area, the LPGA area. The first one is, DOT is in the process of designing, and they're at the 50% design phase, the widening of LPGA Boulevard, the improvements to the interchange at I-95 and LPGA, and also the widening of the bridge over the Tamoka, Tamoka River. They are, they hope to have 60% plans by next month. They are also out acquiring some pieces of property. Most of the, the right-of-way is pretty wide and can accommodate the stormwater, but there are some areas on corner clips and things they need to acquire, and they're in the process of acquiring that additional right-of-way to accommodate that widening. It's, once again, the construction's not funded, but at least the project's moving forward towards that, that, that happenstance, that opportunity. And then the other project that is still moving forward is the Dunn Avenue extension, and this, this project is to connect Dunn Avenue, which is currently terminating at Tamoka Farms Road, to run that westward towards the municipal football stadium, or the municipal stadium on LPGA, and tie in there as another alternate way to getting from one side of the city to, one side of the interstate, to the other side of the interstate for the city. They are currently designing that as a two-lane roadway. There's a developer that is building the western 3,500 feet of it as part of their development, so that is already in the books to be built. The next part is, the second phase is to connect where that ends to Tamoka Farms Road. And they're out actually after acquiring the additional pieces of right-of-way they need, but most of that right-of-way has been donated or already acquired by the county. And I think that's the end of my presentation.
Hey, Kevin.
Do you have questions for Matthew?
Can I?
We're going to hear from the folks first.
Okay, I just don't, I mean, he put something up and was saying something about the LPGA, and I have the exact things, because I am on the TPO, and all that wasn't correct.
Okay.
So.
Well, you can just come back in your comments.
Okay, thank you.
I want to hear from the folks, if you can.
Or should we, should we try to figure out why?
No, but he already put it, he wants to wait, I'll wait.
I do. I want, I want to hear from them and go, okay.
So let me just say, I wanted to clarify a couple of things before we open it up for everybody. So some of the things that Parker talked about, especially in order for you to see the continuum of what's happened as we've been talking to the folks, involved us bringing forward concessions that will be memorialized in that PD document. The decision that you're going to make on this agenda item would not be affected by that, so I want to be fair to you, that the things that he talked about, the, you know, the, the, changing the park or whatever was going to be there to, to natural open space and changing the road configurations, and all those things, the buffering and all that's, that's, that's unique and will be custom fit for this site, that's all PD stuff, okay? The things that are certain for this agenda item are pretty much on this picture that's on the front page of what I gave you guys. What you can be sure of, if you vote in favor of this change, is that that retail area, as I described, the retail use, you know, provisions to you, will not be able to come forward as such, consistent with a retail use that I described to you. The same thing can be said for the OT property, that 13 or 14 acres. If you change it to this all-yellow, you will be sure that you will not have someone asking for an apartment building to go there, or a medical office building. That will be erased as a result of your decision on this item tonight. We will have another discussion about the second item, what the niceties are of what the plan would look like if it comes forward in the zoning classification, which is the second page, or a PD that has other bells and whistles that we negotiate, all of us, you know, the decision you ultimately make, but all of us have concessions that we can incorporate into that. So with that, I'll sit down, and I'd like to be able to respond if we have questions from the audience.
Okay.
Or you guys before.
If the, if the commission has questions, and if there are questions that are raised that you need, do y'all have questions of them at this time? Okay. I would really prefer to hear from them, but I'm going to let you go ahead.
Okay, go, let them go first, and then I'll come back.
Yeah. Let's hear, let's hear from the residents.
Okay. Our first speaker is Trish Hayden, and on deck is Kevin Killian.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for allowing us this time to speak. I'm Trish Hayden. My husband and I live at 103 Litham Way, which is right across the street from where this development is planned, being planned. I had my notes, so I'm going to apologize. After listening to them, I took more notes, so I'm going to apologize if it's a little bit jumbled. The first thing I wanted to say is that at the last meeting my husband and I were able to attend, I will tell you, I was extremely disappointed, because it was a professional meeting, and some of the board members called counsel and their team by their first name, which demonstrated a personal relationship with them, and at a professional meeting, I see it as it should have been Mr., Mrs., or whatever. And so I think by having a personal relationship with them, that demonstrates a conflict of interest, especially since you're voting on what to do with our beautiful neighborhood. That's just my personal opinion. The other thing I want to bring up, again, I have a list, when the current owner of the golf course purchased it... When the current owner of the golf course purchased it, he, he had a meeting with the residents and he promised us, he's buying a golf course, this is what I do. I invest in golf courses. I make them beautiful. I do upgrades. I promise I'm not gonna take this away from you. Well, now we find out that his promises are not true. His promises are going away. He has, he claims he's losing money. We, we look at the practice holes every single day out of our porch. It is packed. I don't know how this gentleman is losing money other than mismanage, mismanaging funds, but if he is losing money, then maybe he should consider selling it to somebody who wants to keep it a golf course and keep our golf course. And keep our community, a golf course community. The road is called LPGA. The headquarters is called LPGA. You take away all of this, LPGA is going to move. They're gonna go up to St. Augustine, they're gonna go someplace else. We are gonna lose our name and we are going to lose our community. And there are some golf course, um, events that happen there that help with the, the neighborhood and help with income and help with tourism that we are gonna lose in Daytona. We can't afford to lose that for the businesses in our community. Um, let's see. I know everybody else and I know my husband sent an email to every single one of you. I was not going to repeat it, but since I'm first on deck, I am going to repeat his email. There has been a huge increase of traffic with all the current building going on with the links with, um, over at, I'm gonna call it Applebee's, honey, I know, but it's Bayberry, and all of the other development going on by the water treatment plant. Our traffic has increased tremendously. On the International Golf Drive, which goes right in front of our bedroom, we have lights constantly at nighttime shining into our bedroom. We have people speeding, revving.
Okay.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
We got you.
Oh, I didn't know I had to, oh.
Yeah, you have a timer.
Nobody told me I had three minutes. Can I just get to one more point?
I'll give you one more point. Everybody else needs to know.
Perfect, one more point, emergency response. I have seen our fire engines and EMS not able to get out of that fire station on LPGA because of the traffic. They can't get out because people block the driveway, they can't cross over the bridge. My final statement is if anyone in my family, my friends or my loved ones can't get emergency services because of the increase in traffic by this development, the others, I will personally hold every single one of you responsible if any one of my family members cannot get emergency service.
Your time has expired.
That's, that's enough of that.
Our next speaker is Kevin Killian and on deck is John Nicholson.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the commission, Kevin Killian, 1218 Champions Drive. Um, I hope that the commission will appreciate that many of the residents here don't know the difference between a, a PD and a comp plan amendment. They just know that somebody wants to bulldoze two golf holes and put houses there. So that's what's happening. Rob likes to say that property owners have rights and property owners do have rights, but the property owner doesn't want to build houses. Property owner wants to sell it to a developer to build houses, but he can't do that until he gets it rezoned. So essentially what he wants the residents to do is help him sell his property by not complaining about an activity that's gonna adversely affect them. You know, I, by far, I'll tell you that the plan that we have now, and I've been a part of these meetings, the plan that they presented is the least defensive there, there was. But I know how this works. I've been on the other side. You ask for the world and then you say, oh, look, I just won half the world. Isn't it great that I gave you half the world back? It, you know, it just doesn't work that way. So this is a functioning golf course. This is not Tamoka, this is not Indigo. This is a functioning golf course. So if you're gonna start bulldozing on their golf courses, what's next? Memorial Stadium? Champions Elementary? God, you know, think of all the houses we could put there. When is enough enough? You know, is there ever enough? There, there's people behind me who don't think this board or the planning board have ever seen a development they didn't like because they all passed. And every time that we complain out at LPGA and say, the traffic is just untenable, it's horrible, we can't get out of our neighborhood, the answer from some here and some on the planning board is, well, you know, that happened 20 years ago. I wasn't here, that, that was all done 20 years ago. Not this, guys, this is on you. So I would appreciate it if you listened to your residents. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Russell Brunning? You're up after Mr. Nicholson, sir. Okay.
Uh, John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. I don't know if any of you all have driven out by the site. It is all homes, all right? Uh, what was planned there is all commercial. So the question is, commercial or residential? I like the idea that, uh, Parker Meissenberg is associated with this. We're not gonna bulldoze all the tree, which normally happens. Remember, uh, Margaritaville? Bulldozers came out and every tree wrecked, all right? Most of the trees are going to remain. Uh, it'll be, uh, hidden from the major road. The access is not onto the major road, it's from the interior. Golf is not as popular as it used to be. Tennis.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna remind the audience to please, yeah.
Maintain decorum.
There have been a half dozen golf courses that have closed and there's a problem. What do you do with golf courses once they close? Because the residents don't want houses built on them because they were expecting to live with the open area behind them. This is not the case here. There are no houses in this area. They're across the street. So nobody backs up to where these houses are going. It backs up to a street. So when they sit there and say, we're losing our golf course, they're not really losing it. The practice, the big, uh, range is still there. They're taking those two small units, making another one out of it. So it's not as much as they used to have, but it could be a heck of a lot worse, all right? Traffic, I don't know if any of you all have been on B-side during Bike Week, Bike Jobberfest, any of, Spring Break? We have traffic where you can't get out of your house. It happens. Some of you have been on LPGA. That bridge is terrible. You can't get across 95. It's bumper-to-bumper by Buc-E's. So traffic is, is, is everywhere. It's going to happen, all right? This is a good project for a lot of reasons. Somebody once said or told me, well, they're never gonna put anything in that commercial area because it's too small. Remember next to Seabreeze? They put some drained it or some garbage in the water and somebody called it a, a island and bought it and they wanted to put a marina in it and use the city's parking under the bridge. And then a beach street, submerged land again, a very tiny sliver of land, and they wanted to put a huge condo on it. So people can use small pieces of property for all kinds of things. This is a huge piece of property for commercial. You really don't want apartment houses in the middle of that suburb. It is really a suburb. You want to keep it residential homes. You want to make sure that no commercial goes into that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Russell Brunning and on deck is Cheryl Rubin.
Thank you very much. Five years ago, my wife and I lived in Orlando.
Excuse me, please hold your talking to silence. You save it, please.
And I thank you and I would like to say I live at 309, um, Wentworth Avenue. And I'm in the direct view of the driving range. And five years ago, when my wife came to Daytona Beach from Orlando, we had one dream to live on a golf course and we saw the LPGA tournament and we said, this is beautiful. And we love the idea. When you get off the, the overpass, it said LPGA. Now, what's happening is we might as well change the name from LPGA because that's exactly what we're trying to do. First thing that happens is we no longer have the serenity of an area. We have apartment complexes. We have high-traffic, uh, congestion going on. It starts at about 2:30 in the afternoon that we're at the, um, I apologize, I'm getting older, so I can't remember some of the things I'm trying to talk about, but, uh, what is it? Latitudes is right there. Your car stops there and we have to get past that two-lane bridge, which every time I pass over it, it says dedicated in 1962. Yes, we need something new, but then I'm being told, maybe you can correct me, it's gonna take five years before we get the new overpass there. But they're worried about having the overpass for the traffic, which we're going through right now. And yet developers, and I'll call them very greedy developers, want to sit here and say, we want to build more homes. Weren't the apartment complex where we put thousands of, of units there? Or the Jones Homes or the CBS Homes or the Lenard Homes or the Masonic Homes, which are beautiful, but they're all being built right now? And yet we're looking at taking away the driving range, which again, the wonderful woman before me who said she can see all the people there, we see it all the time. We walk our dog, it's beautiful out there. We have a great time in our neighborhood. And I think even the mayor, who happens to be one of my neighbors living in the same subdivision as I am. This is a beautiful area that I do not want to have destroyed. And I apologize, I had a few other things to say, but all I want to say is, please, please, not for the sake of getting a couple extra dollars into the coffers. We want to make sure that we are taking care of our citizens and the people that live in the area. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Rubin and on deck is Greg Rubin.
Uh, good evening. My name is Cheryl Rubin. I live at Seven Lions, pause, Seven Nobles. I was really just going to say ditto tonight to everybody else's comments, but I do have one point I'd like to make. As an introduction, my husband and I, he's the next one to speak, we've owned our home at LPGA for over 25 years. That makes us part of the original LPGA vision. For many of you, maybe you know what that vision was. I hope that you do and maybe how it's evolved because it has changed. It is not what Daytona Beach said it was going to be or what it wanted it to be 30 years ago. We have seen developers come and go and each time the city's vision has changed and each time the standards have lowered. It doesn't look anything like the original paperwork from 30 years ago. For many years, the LPGA residents felt the owners, Tamoka consolidated, and you, the city of Daytona, had our best interests at hearts and that you had our backs covered. Unfortunately, that has changed. With the new owners, though they're running a nice golf course, they do not have the homeowner's best interest at heart. And we hope that you will take care of the homeowners this time. One thing that I haven't heard discussed, however, I did hear it briefly just a few minutes ago, is what does the LPGA headquarters seem to think about all of this change? The rezoning of that plan will change the practice area and for them, this decision will change what they do. Will they be able to bring Q School back? Will they have other tournaments here? Removing the practice facility gives LPGA headquarters another reason to leave Daytona Beach. They want to relocate if we don't want them. And I'm sure there's more welcoming areas and that we'll be excited to be the home of the LPGA. The practice facility was never, in the original vision, intended to be residential development. And your vote tonight is the opportunity to keep one small piece of that original vision. Give the people that have been here for years and years a reason to stay here and to have a small piece of that vision. If you choose to pass the rezoning tonight, which I hope you don't, I hope you will scrutinize every variance they bring to you because they are bringing those variances to you for only one reason. And they are submitting them for the purpose of making more money and putting more houses out there. Consider the homeowners tonight. This is your last opportunity to save the vision that your predecessors had 30 years ago. Thank you.
Our final, our final speaker on this item is Greg Rubin, and I have a number of people that have signed up for the next item, a 9C.
Hi, I'm Greg Rubin. I'm glad she went first because she did a great job. We do live at Seven Lions, pause, Seven Nobles. That was one of the model homes. Uh, we will have been here 28 years next week and, uh, it's, it's been a pleasure. My question to, to all of you, and thank you for your time, by the way. I know, I know it's, 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 it takes a lot of time. How many of you are members of the golf course? Nobody? Oh, I know, at least we have somebody living here. Who, who else lives in, in the, in the LPGA community?
Nobody else can live there.
Okay.
They have to live in different parts of the city.
Yeah. I don't know, I understand, it's a big city too. It's not just, I, I know that. What, what I'd like to say is, a couple of things. One, uh, the gentlemen here obviously are very knowledgeable, uh, well-spoken. The numbers they threw out, first of all, over half of the space we're talking about is zoned golf. It is not zoned, uh, office, it's not zoned retail. Uh, the retail numbers, I led one of the largest retail consulting firms in the United States for 40 years. And I can tell you, there's not a retailer alive who wants to, wants to occupy that space. Has anybody watched the news? Anybody seen what's happening with Forever 21? With all the different, they're going out of business. Then, that's not ever gonna become a retail space. The golf is golf. And the office buildings, gotta be nice to have a medical building there. I don't think it's gonna happen. So all those 600 properties that everybody talks about, it's the, it's theoretical. I mean, they could put a, you know, maybe, maybe NASA is gonna put a space, space shuttle there, but, uh, it's not gonna happen. And I think what you have to look at is this was and is still to a degree, a jewel in, in Daytona Beach in Volusia County. It really is the only even reasonable, uh, non-totally private golf course in the county. And all you're doing is, is making it worse. That was never meant for housing. And if you, and, and if you do play golf there, you'll notice how much development is going on as we speak. Hundreds and thousands of units are going up. You don't need to take the practice facility, which by the way, we already, we have a members' range, which, which is gonna go. We already have a sand and chipping facility out there. So what we're talking about here is not additive, it's taking it away. And one other point, I don't know how many of you have children or grandchildren, we have, we have grandchildren. That practice facility is a perfect place for young people to learn golf because you can't go out on the golf course and do it. And you take that away and you're taking it away from our youth. And it's just, it's a mistake. We have a jewel in this, in this, in this, you know, and I know Volusia County's grown like crazy and I think it's great, but taking this away is one of the biggest mistakes I think you'll make in, in, in your tenure. We appreciate all your service and we appreciate the time you, you all spend. And, uh, we just hope you can see that this is not a necessity, uh, for Volusia County, Daytona Beach, or the LPGA community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Can I ask him a question right quick?
Can I have more speakers?
The gentleman that just walked away, I'd like to ask him a question. Uh, your, your, um, what does your deed say? Is any deed restrictions or any, any, uh?
No.
Any of that stuff on your deeds that live there?
Uh, our, our deed?
Yeah.
We live on the golf course. I can tell you, we asked for, when we moved in 28 years ago, uh, to put a swimming pool in, we asked for a variance that we were denied because we were told there were no variances being given. And I know in this plan, there are a bunch of variances being requested. But I, 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 I don't know, sir, if our, if our deed says that. I, I assume it does not, but if it does, God bless.
I did have, I did have two more speakers signed up to speak. For 9B, um, instead of 9C. So it's Amy Knox and on deck is Karen Knox. And if you're gonna speak on 9C, you'll have to fill out another form for it as well.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Amy Knox. I live at 220 Centennial Park Drive. Uh, I wanted to speak on this item. One of the questions, uh, that I have is I look at this piece of property, there's, right at that practice area, there's 76.19 acres designated on the future land use map for golf. There's 12.62 acres on the map that serve as the office transition. When you take a look at the future land use map, that's supposed to set a vision that to serve as a future guide, uh, for you, for you in determining the long-term vision for the community. How the land should be used. It should be a guide for future development and guide infrastructure investments. And it should ensure compatibility with surrounding use. The intent of the land use and zoning, the city needs to be certain, there are adequate infrastructure and public services for this area. Right now... Right now, there is not adequate infrastructure for the area. The purpose of zoning is to prevent further impact. I encourage this commission to take a very hard look at this development and ask the question. I know we've had a lot of things brought up. I know they mentioned earlier that something about reducing trips by 26% from this parcel. Well, right now, reducing it 26%, if there's no trips being generated now, that's really not reducing it 26%. Things like that. It's all how you want to spin it. I mean, if you're pro-development, and you're the attorney for the developer, of course, then yeah, it's a 26% reduction. But it's all how you look at it. It's designated as golf. I don't know why we want to change it away from golf. There's the 12.62 acres as office transition, I believe is what it's at right now when I looked at the map. How much green space exists right now within the city? How much more do you want to give away? We have just had how many trees chopped down out in that area out there along LPGA Boulevard? I mean, as we continue on, there's less and less area. So I encourage you to think about that tonight as you're making your decision, and think of the impact. And like I said, traffic and emergency services are two minor concerns, not alone the impact on water, sewer, et cetera. There's a lot of impacts that this development, even though they might say it's small, at 120 units, 120 units is 120 more units than were there before. So I think at that, it's just something that you really need to be cognizant of.
And our final speaker is Karen Knox.
Hello, my name is Karen Knox, and I live at 220 Centennial Park Drive. And yes, I am related to that individual, that's my daughter. We have moved to Florida, we love golf, and I'm sure you've all heard of NIMBY. Not in my backyard. That is not why I'm here. When I lived in Wisconsin, I had a goat farm built in my backyard. It was not a problem. But here, I want to bring forth the idea of, if you go to London, they have a percentage of their city that must remain green. What is the rule in Daytona Beach? What is your guideline for how much of your city will remain green, be a green space? I don't know if you have a guideline, I have been unable to find it. I also wanted to comment on a couple of things that the builder kept referring to. The park, like we are against having a park. There is a reason why that park was removed, and it's not because we don't have people from outside of LPGA visiting LPGA. They mentioned how many people are on that driving range? How many people are on the golf course? Most of them do not live there. Many of them do not live there. The reason, that was not the city park. If that park were built there, it is up to the HOAs to put in the money to support it, not like other city parks. So do not think that was a city park that was being invested in that area. Other than that, you know, I feel like Mr. Rubin said, give me a office building there, give me a Dunkin' Donuts there, give me something, I wouldn't mind. So I would suggest, leave the 76 acres in golf. Leave the 12 acres for whatever they want to do with it. That would be their choice. And we will see what happens with the development. So consider what we, as the people who live there, the people who've moved here, and what we would like to see in your future. What do you want to see? Not for us right now, but for a generation from now. If you take away that green space, it's gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to Commissioner, because she had a statement, question? All right, question? Do you have a question for Rob?
I wanted to also try to answer some of the questions that were raised there.
Okay, whatever you want to respond to, but I didn't hear any questions. Go ahead.
It's fine. If you didn't hear it, then I didn't hear any.
No, you better answer them. Because I want to make them hear what you said.
You're going to answer questions from them first?
It's up to you.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Start with you.
I was just going to get you to reiterate, 600 units by right can go on that property?
So all of what we're talking about, and I'm glad you raised that point, so Mr. Rubin talked about theoretical, and that's the world that we're in in this agenda item. The next one, not so much. So all of this is about what the theoretical maxims are for certain things, the parameters that are in the comprehensive plan. It's an aspirational document, it talks about planning, it doesn't talk about when you can put building blocks on the ground. So, you know, when we talk about things like the percentage of change of the traffic impact, we're talking about if you do everything that you're allowed to do on the maximum level, here's what will come out the end of the pipe. So the percentage that we were talking about wasn't somebody coming up with crazy numbers. He was looking at the Institute of Traffic Engineering data that the city and the county, traffic engineers and their consultants have all reviewed in this last two years, and agreed that those are the actual comparisons that are very fair, and there wasn't a 26% reduction, it was a thousand-something percent reduction in the theoretical world that we're talking about on this agenda item. So I think it's important that you guys understand that a lot of things that were said tonight were about the PD parts, okay? About the plan parts. And some of the things like, the driving range is not being eliminated. I don't see anybody from LPGA here saying that conversion of two practice holes to housing that's going to hopefully have golfers, and an enhanced short game practice area are going to be something that they're going to move out of town for. Didn't hear anything from them about that. So, you know, the traffic things, I think we've talked about, taking the driving range away, not true. LPGA leaving, I just don't see that. You know, I think Mrs. Knox, the last speaker, she kind of ended on a note that I think's important for you guys on this item, which is, she thinks Dunkin' Donuts and medical office might be the right thing there on this property. By, maybe I'm misquoting her, I thought I heard her say that that might be something she would like to have. If you do approve this item, that opportunity will go away. Now, if you like the idea that Dunkin' Donuts and medical office or apartments could go there, then stick with this one.
Yes, sir.
Trees. You know, I'm a big fan of trees. How many trees are there approximately? And these are mature trees, correct? How many of, are you going to, are you going to clear cut?
Yeah, I don't know. I couldn't hear your question with all the noise.
Come on, Rob.
Please, please. It's incumbent upon you to act with decorum. Just let them be.
A couple of comments, you know, out of the parcel we're developing, there is two golf holes, that there's no trees on the golf hole part of it. The remaining trees next to the roadway, we have to demonstrate of the site area, we're keeping 15%.
This area right here on your map on the other one, I don't have time to find that one. But this is all tree log here. How much of that are you going to take out? All but 15%?
Yeah, we're leaving 15% of the treeed area. So it varies from 25 to about 55 feet, that buffer that we're leaving.
So to the extent there's a natural buffer, of what width?
It goes from 25 to 50. And Strickland, something else, when the DRI and LPGA, and I've done a number of the subdivisions out there, this has been a question that's come up. The master plan for LPGA has many tree areas that are wetland, upland buffers that are set aside, pockets that have the subdivisions that are being built, they're meant for development, not for tree preservation in the master plan. I don't know if that helps you or not, but the overall plan, there's 175-foot buffer next to the Tamoca River that's totally tree. And all of that was kind of thought about when they did the DRI master plan many, many, many years ago.
Right, and people weren't as, didn't have, weren't as, didn't have the conservation values that we have nowadays. You said it was not designated to be preservation.
Yeah, another point to make, you know, Consolidated, because I was very fortunate to do most of their work. They owned the property to the west of this, and treeed, it's got lands, uplands, all that was sold to the Water Management District and put in preservation. So I think when you look at one subdivision or one parcel, their development, this developer of LPGA set aside thousands of acres that are for habitat, wetlands, endangered species and all that. So just kind of making that point, that the vision out there included that other property that's left natural.
Hey, Commissioner Strickland, one thing I would add is, there are also street trees that are within the right-of-way. When you're going down that boulevard, if you're looking at it, there's a lot of trees that aren't on our property that are going to remain, of course. And Parker has committed in his PD plan, again, this is the second item on the, not this one, to have an additional buffer that's on the lots that are...
10-foot rear plant with a continuous hedge that'll grow to six foot in height, and then...
How long will that take?
Three years, from the time they're planted.
Okay.
And then we're planting hardwoods as close as you can plant them along the backs of those lots to also help with the screening. And that goes both ways, to have the development screened from the road, but also the backyard to the development not seeing the traffic.
Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Canty, you had raised a point that was different from what Matt had presented. I want to clarify that if we could.
Yes, I was. So there was a few things I wanted to discuss. I am on the TPO, and we are still looking at LPGA east, I mean, excuse me, west of 92. We're still looking probably at least, I'm just being nice, five to six years. Okay? And before, and that is being nice, to see. So the PD and E study was completed in February 2024. The design is ongoing, funded at 8.7 million, with the estimate completion of fall 2025. The right-of-way is partially funded at $27.9 million. The construction is unfunded, and the cost of the construction is estimated at $217.6 million. And right now, the county is in negotiation with the state for taking over that road. But we are not looking at any time, I mean, any time that road being widening for at least another five, six years. You also brought up the Dunn Extension, which that is county. And I know we approved one of your projects, Mr. Merle, for the INA project, which I thought was a good project and low density, and they were paying up to their right-of-way for the Dunn Extension. But the Dunn Extension is ongoing, and that's still way out. I mean, longer than you said you were issuing COs in two years? I mean, the Dunn Extension probably is not going to be done within two years. Then you're talking about Avalon, Timber Creek, which we're still in negotiations with that, and Avalon will be paying through their extension through their neighborhood, but Timber Creek not all the way through. So there's still a lot of problems with infrastructure over in that area, and there's still a lot of development that has been approved that hasn't even started yet. I mean, just like Avalon, what is it, 2,000 and, I don't know, 250 homes, something like that? I don't have it in front of me. But we still have a lot of stuff. And I do not see, you haven't convinced me how this is helping the neighborhood, I mean, neighborhood like the INA project, I thought was great because it's helping pay for the Dunn Extension. The Redemption Church, I thought was a great project because they already meet out. Grand Champion for the last five years, and Mosaic, Bayberry, Margaritaville, they all attend that church. So I don't see where this is benefiting the community, and you haven't actually convinced me of that yet. So that's what I'm trying to look at. You are also saying to them that the office transition and all that, they could have a motel, they could have this grocery store. Do you actually think a grocery store is going to come in the middle of LPGA? No, we can even get one on Bayside, or over here on Beach Street. So I'm just, you're not convincing me why this is such a good thing for the residents.
So I hear you. And I figured you'd get that response. So at the end of the day, the things that we're talking about, Commissioner, have to do with the PD. In other words, the idea that we're bringing you something to get something, that negotiated zoning, is the next item on the agenda. The only, so I just want to say...
Wait, let me clear. I understand that. I am talking, you brought this in about the...
The traffic.
The traffic. So that's what I am talking about, the traffic. You even said, which we are, I think, all of us, no, we've been up, all of us have been up here long enough to know, that we can go back to the county like we did on Waypoint because we wanted the traffic signal. And what you showed me, what the city is getting, what, $40,000, $40,000 in fair share, and I forget the county, so it's actually not a lot of money. Yes, we can designate certain things. So I am talking about what you actually talked about.
Right, I agree. So, and I'll have to apologize, because some of the things that Matthew said have to do with the next item, too.
I should have the opportunity to talk to you because you brought it up.
Commissioner, I've been trying to keep you from talking. At the end of the day, what I was going to say was, the thing that he really was talking about in this item is the pre-post that you look at for what's allowed now under the comp plan and what we're proposing. Way less. There's no debate, there's no debate from the county traffic engineer, the city traffic engineer, or their consultants, or this gentleman who knows as much about it as I have ever seen. So on that point, traffic, the only thing on this agenda item is more or less traffic based on the request, way less, without question, without debate. Same with the uses that are allowed. The use for residential, low-density residential versus a mixture of commercial and apartments and offices. That's the only thing that's on this agenda item. That's your choice.
And thank you for clearing that up, because I do actually agree with you. If that would come in, there would be more traffic. I just don't see that actually coming into that community. And I know there was a reason why I got tired of all these expired PDs, and we need to complete the rezoning, because decades ago, they had a different plan out there. And that stuff wasn't happening. Well, some of it was, and it shouldn't have happened.
So we talked about the uses, and I agree that maybe the grocery store is not the right thing. One of the biggest things that jumps out in this list of uses on the larger piece is multifamily. And so we didn't really get into that much, but I think you and all, we all know, there's a lot of multifamily, and there's people that want to live in apartments, still. And so that's an option. It's not an option that this particular applicant is choosing. That's the reason for this request. We don't want to do that. We eliminate the opportunity to do that voluntarily, and give us the opportunity to bring the next item to you, and then we can negotiate the terms of it. That's where we are. So, any more questions?
No, and I agree, and you have actually, I'm giving you credit, because I've been in a lot of meetings with this, and you have actually done a good job trying to communicate and trying to lessen it, the development, and work with the community. But what I'm hearing from my residents, they still would like to take their chance and see what actually comes in there. So, I mean, but I do give you credit, because I know how much you have worked with these residents.
Thank you. I think we have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, you had a question?
Not really a question, but, so in regards to the small-scale comp plan amendment, a lot of the information that you provided was based on hypothesis, right? So your impact analysis was current future land use potential. So it's a potential, it may not happen. Another thing that was listed here was the transportation element. So we have to promote safe and efficient traffic circulation serving existing and future land uses. And also says, no street improvement shall adversely impact single-family areas. I don't know if I'm in agreeance with that. And the other thing is a housing element. So the objective, new construction, assist the private sector in providing the necessary additional housing units to support the planning horizon population protection. And this is to utilize future land use and zoning map to assure a continued supply of vacant, underused, utilized, or redeveloped land for a diversity of housing types. We have a lot of single-family homes that are still in the planning process. We have like 1,700 homes that are approved to be built. And we also have another, as of this afternoon, just in the city of Daytona Beach, 1,300 single-family homes for sale. So I don't know if this is a real need, and we're talking about what's the need and what's the public benefit, and I don't think that approval of small scale has been proved, so...
So I hear you. And again, to the public benefit piece, that does go to the plan development as opposed to the comp amendment. But the choice is pretty straightforward. It's residential, or do you want the other ones? And that's your choice.
I just want to make a statement. I realize that developers have property rights. I don't know where in our society in this area, we got to a position of it was okay for them to... them to exercise their property rights for profit over the quality of life of people that are already living here.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So here's, here's my concern, and that is, last month, I, I said, and I meant this, that I wasn't going to support any more projects unless we seriously had a serious conversation about traffic on, in the LPGA area. So this sounds to me like this project drives traffic straight down to LPGA, over in the Jimmy Ann area, and straight on down to the Nova area, where there is already no traffic light for people to get out on that Jimmy Ann strip to LPGA. I personally believe that traffic on LPGA is, is, it doesn't get better. It is getting far worse. And until we discuss that issue, until we come up with a plan that moves traffic in an, in a way that people can't, people's quality of life is not affected, I'm not going to support any more projects. That's the main reason why I'm not going to support this project tonight. Please wait, please wait. That is the main reason why I'm not going to support this project. It's not, has anything to do with the golf course. It has nothing to do with, and I do believe we need more homes. I don't care how many homes are coming, we are still in desperate need of homes, and we are in desperate needs of whatever we can bring that alleviates some of the issues with needing more residents for our, for our residents. But traffic is just going to, it's going to be the killer here. It's going to be the, the one that makes me say absolutely not. It, it messes up people's quality of life. I drive it every day now, and my quality of life, I know if my quality of life, and I'm very patient, most of you know that, if my quality of life is, is. You hush. I have the mic now. I am very patient. And if, I can tell you I'm patient. I have, I've fostered over 28 foster children. It takes the patience of Job to do that. So, so I know if I'm in that traffic every single day, all day, and, and where it used to take me a certain amount of time to get to work, and now that time is doubling and tripling, people, that messes up people's time with their family. It messes up people's time to get to the grocery store and, and to get home in it at a decent hour, and you're adding 15, 20 minutes per day to people's lives just being on the road. So that is the reason why I'm not going to support it tonight, is the traffic.
Do we, do we have questions of Rob before we talk about the item?
If there aren't any more questions, I have a statement, a final statement, and I, this is the one thing I can do without any vote. So I, I've, I've been doing this for almost 40 years. I can feel the, the room. I realize you guys would prefer the existing land use to remain. I get that, that's what I'm hearing. So we need to retool, we need to rethink what we're doing, I think, as a property owner. So we're going to withdraw both this and the next item from the, from the agenda and withdraw our request. And we'll come back and see you guys when we got something different for you might like. Ben, is that?
Yeah, I think the applicant has the ability to withdraw, and if they withdraw, there's, there's nothing to vote on.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry to take so much of it.
Before we progress, I would like to say this to the staff. I want to make certain that you guys will review this area, and we need to make certain that, that we, that whatever can be built there is congruent with what's already there. So we don't want to have something that could be built there that's a skyscraper in the future, an apartment that supersedes, you know, the current area requirements and the way that the area is already designed. So I'm not sure how you guys can achieve that, but I'd like for you to look at that so that we are protecting the sanctity of this neighborhood and this community. It's very important, we understand, because I want to make sure that we understand, that we, we state this, we do understand and respect, and I think we've, we've done this, the rights of people who own property there, that's one of the strongest rights in America. It truly is. It is one of the most protected in, in our constitution, or in, you know, so we respect that, but we also have to, as a community, we're given a responsibility to establish certain standards and to insulate our neighborhoods from change that restricts or inhibits the quality of life of the people who live there. And so a lot was said tonight, and I, I live with two people who golf on that golf course. They learn the game on that course. So they don't want, and we partly chose that neighborhood, as other people do, because they would have access, be able to ride their bikes to that course. And they're coming of an age where they can put their gear on the back and they can ride to the course. I have, we have had, and I have had a longstanding philosophy and belief that if a community is built for golf, then not a single shred of what is meant for golf should change unless there's an overwhelming sentiment of the people who live around that community ask for that. So while I do understand, and I want us all to understand, what is at risk? Because we, we, we need to be clear of that. There are some things at risk. I do not believe that they can get 600 units of anything on that parcel, but there is a risk that they will build an apartment there. I just want to make certain that at risk were to come to fruition, that that's not some monstrosity that we can't deal with. So I appreciate the sentiments that I've heard from my colleagues tonight. We have heard you, we, I personally believe, and I think my colleagues believe, that it's not fair for a person to purchase off-court. Say you're going to do one thing, and then switch groups. So sometimes you have to fight, and you have to take a risk just because it's the right thing to do. As your neighbor, I'm with you.
All right.
Yeah, I agree with you. Okay. So we remove it.
I'd like to say one thing, and I've talked to you guys about, there is state laws going through, and sometimes if something does go through, we will not be able to help. And I want to be aware of it because I do live in a golf community as well. Our north golf course is active, our south is not. And actually, it's, hasn't been a golf course for decades. And we're doing something a little different. We're actually talking about maybe do a single family because we don't want apartments in our neighborhood. So I just want everyone to think about what could happen and what you could add. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, folks, if you guys can leave as quickly and quietly as possible so we can continue on with our meeting.
I really appreciate it. It's nice to know that our civic leaders really are in our building.
Sir, sir, sir.
I appreciate it. Really. Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Put the hammer down.
Mr. Mayor, company offered to build a retail establishment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're still in the middle of a meeting, so we're going to move on to item number 10, which is our introduction of ordinances. This is for city commission comments or questions only. Our first item is 10A, which is the finance department. This is authorizing issuance of debt in amount not to exceed $15 million for Phase 1 Jackie Robinson Ballpark. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An warrants of the city commission of the city of Daytona Beach, Florida, authorizing the borrowing of money and the issuance of debt in amount not to exceed $15 million for the purpose of providing additional financing for certain capital improvements related to the Jackie Robinson Ballpark Stadium and providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? Okay, the public hearing and final action is set for April 2nd. So we have no administrative items tonight, so we're going to move on to item number 12. And 12A is a public works city hall expansion design-build project. This is a city commission discussion.
Assistant City Manager Andy Holmes will come forward. As you all are aware, that a couple of months ago, meetings ago, you encouraged us to go forward with looking at putting an addition to our city hall complex on our parking lot. Andy is leading the charge of that item. Staff has been working together with finance, with legal, and other staff members to bring something forward. We have individuals who will be able to communicate about the statue, as, the state statue of why we're doing this. As you all are aware, the mayor will have to sign a letter in the next week discussing how we're going to spend these surplus, additional funds, excess funds. And so we need to make sure we are going down the right road to do that with the funds we have from our general government funds in our P and L funds. So go ahead, Mr. Holmes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. We have discussed, staff has taken a look at two alternatives for an addition on, on city hall. One out in the parking lot to the south, and then one out in the parking lot to the east that fronts on Palmetto. And for a number of, of reasons, technical reasons primarily, the one to the south that fronts, or to the east that fronts on Palmetto, it looks like the better alternative and would result in the most cost-effective way to do this. We believe that the addition at this point should be a three-story addition. We have two-story right now, and in the three-story, the first floor would remain a parking lot. And you'd have two occupied stories above that facing to the south, fronting on Palmetto. The first occupied story, second floor of the addition would be P and L space, and P and L funds would be used to construct that portion of the building. And the third floor, second occupied store would be general government services, and that could be funded with the general government impact fees. Total cost, around 15 to 20 million right now. We'll refine that obviously as we go forward, if this commission asks us to go forward. Funding, P and L funds, there's about eight to 10 million that we probably could use there. And general government, there's 10 to 12 million available. So we believe our budget, preliminary budget's realistic with the funding that's available. So I guess what we're looking for tonight is some kind of a consensus that you want us to continue to pursue this, probably would go design-build for this due to timing, and, and also probably be a precast concrete structure that they could erect right from the trucks when they truck the panels in, just due to the limited staging area that's available on the site. So happy to address any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions or?
I mean, it's about what we should be doing, moving forward.
So we build it. And then do we have funds to maintain it as we kind of move on? Do we have enough to do that? We have the initial funds that we're going to use now, but what do we have to maintain it?
It's a great question. I think we can maintain it with a small, relatively small increase in our budget. The, the P and L section, which is 50% of the space, would obviously be maintained using P and L funds, and, and they have a slight surplus annually. So I think that would work out just fine, and then the rest of it we could maintain.
Questions? Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I don't know if we really have questions. Well, maybe a few. So we have around 11, 12 million dollars in impact fees, correct?
Yes.
And according to design on the third, on the third floor is to be determined, correct? And that would be used at impact fees, correct?
Yes, that'd be.
And, okay. And then you're saying, how much do we have out of the $19 million, which was 11 million over?
About eight to 10 million that we think we can dedicate to the project.
I mean, so how much do we have out of the 11 million that we were supposed to spend down?
I don't understand the question.
Okay, so we had 11 million dollars we were allowed to keep. Oh, well, we had to spend by state. Only 3 million of that.
For giving the, the fees for six months.
Okay, so.
So there's about eight left.
Eight left, that's my question. Okay.
So that, we would retain a, a reserve of everything we're allowed to keep going forward. So there would be, there's another $5 million that we would retain in reserves, but we're permitted to do that.
Okay. And when I talked to Mr. Veacher and Ben today in my, when, was it Tuesday, Monday? Monday in my agenda review, we're actually not making a vote to move forward, correct? Is that correct still?
We're not making a vote on the actual contract, but we're making a vote to continue moving forward with this process to bring an RFP, do an RFP.
An RFP, okay. And we still would have to do plans and everything else and everything. So if the Senate bill, 1548, House bill 1477 would go through, and it said July, I think it would go, be in effect July something, July 5th, 4th, something of that nature, and it actually says you must use it for storm-related. Mr. Gross, how would that happen if it says that and we're actually not finished with everything?
It's really hard to conjecture at this point. It's hypothetical, and in addition, the bill could change between now and then if it does get passed. At some point, that bill may or may not matter depending upon whether we have a contract in place and.
Okay.
And how far along those things are. But I, I'd really rather reserve the analysis for when things are more concrete, pardon the pun.
Gotcha. Okay. And, and I mean, I'm all for expanding and using the impact fees, but I think my, the residents out there that I represent, mainly a lot of, all of us represent, would like to use more money on storm-related projects than actually building on. So, and I know we have a deadline with J-LAC. What is that, April 4th? April 4th? Okay. Is there any way, and that's from legal, can we send that letter to J-LAC stating that we're putting out a RFP to?
That's what we're doing.
Correct. And then, and then say if this Senate bill would change, then we might want to look?
I don't know that we're mentioning the Senate bill in there, but I don't, I mean, we, we'll be able to change it. We don't have to do anything until it comes before us. So if Senate bill, excuse me, if the Senate bill comes to fruition and we haven't done what we are putting in motion, then we'll be able to stop it.
Okay. That's my, that was my question. Plus, I think in the J-LAC letter states, they don't want us to show how we're budgeting. It says they want us to show how we're spending the money. Am I correct that J-LAC letter states that?
Yeah, I think that's one of the reasons why this request is being made. Because staff still got to spend some resources in getting the design documents to the point where they can go, then go offer an RFP for a design-build firm, and then there's going to be review time associated with that. And so there's going to be some work between now and then to get a contract back to the commission.
And then I'm, I'm totally fine if we're actually not taking a vote because, I mean, either way.
Well, we are taking a vote because we're giving direction. We're giving them direction to move forward. So it's the same as a vote. I don't want to be nebulous about it because we are telling them to move forward with this item, to, to bring us something back and do the things that they have to do so that this can happen.
I mean, we're telling them to move forward to do an RFP, correct? And we're not telling them to start building or, right, or doing anything like that. Because they do have 20 million, and we know anytime you do a project, it's going to be more than 20 million. So we need to see where this money's coming from, just like Jackie Robertson Stadium, the fire department, anything we do, it goes up. And we know, yeah, and we know it's not going to be 20 million.
I do want to be clear that the 11 million for the general fund can only be used for the expansion of city hall and governmental expenses. So these are impact fees that have been going in, and it was a part of the original plan prior to probably many of the elected officials for a city hall that, so these funds only can be gone towards that through the impact fees going forward.
Right.
So even if we don't do anything, we'll still have these monies in the general fund impact fees for a city hall still on the books, no matter what.
Correct. That's the 12 million. And you can only use for permanent licensing. Plus, I believe we have a, I believe we have another fund as well, it says city hall, designated. Plus, I believe we have a, I believe we have another fund as well as says City Hall designated. Is that the 12 million dollars?
That's what I'm talking about now, yes.
Okay, so we have two funds or just one?
We have two funds. We have our P and L. And we have our general funds. I think it's about 11 million dollars in the general fund with about 1.5 in reserves in the general fund for an addition for City Hall or a build of City Hall. And we have the funds for P and L that are wholly separate.
Absolutely, I got that. And I know you sent over this presentation over here with the permanent licensing because the 19,000, I wanted to know how we got down. And you told me there would be a presentation. Are we still having that?
President, they can tell you how.
Okay, because when I'm, I'm going to ask questions real quick, I'm sorry. When I was looking at this, I don't know if the rest of the commissioners were sent this, but was the other commissioner sent this?
No, you, we said what you asked, you asked questions and we just brought it back to your attention.
I just wanted to know how the 19,000 was been down.
19 million.
19 million, excuse me, was spent down. And you didn't send it to the rest of the commission?
No, did you? You asked me to send it down.
No, I just was curious because usually they get whatever we ask for. And I do have a few questions. In this, I see the mobile permitting center for 400,000, which is still a capital project. And it should actually be in the reserves. Can you ask, can I ask you why that's not?
So which, Natalia Akros, Chief Financial Officer, so which of those projects as reserves, so to speak? So the reserves themselves, so that money basically parked in further direction from the commission?
No, there's actually a reserve and then there's a capital project. This is actually a capital project that we said no to and it's still in a capital project. So it needs to go into a reserve.
We will use them as a placeholder as well. If we get direction from the commission, we will move to.
So we're going to use all this stuff as holders instead of actually putting them in reserves?
At this point of time.
I'm just getting this on record, so.
Yeah, that's understand. We did not get direct.
I don't see anything funny asking questions, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So you're talking about the worksheet that City Manager sent to you yesterday, right?
Yes.
So as of now, active projects, the one that in blue. So other projects on the hold until further direction. And if we get direction for you to move to reserve, we can do that.
Okay, can, I just asked a question. Why do we put all those pockets of money in capital projects? And shame on us because sometimes during the budget, I've noticed that we approve all these capital projects that are not actually capital projects. And I'm just curious why they don't go in the reserve? Because I have looked at other books prior when I first got elected. And a lot of these projects actually went into reserves and not capital projects. Because these are actually not capital projects.
These projects that you look, they are capital projects.
Okay.
They really are.
The mobile permit is not a capital project.
But for us, from accounting point of standpoint, it is.
Okay.
And what determines is if we have accounting line. I don't want to go into details, but.
So you just make up names? Pretty much?
Very much.
Yeah, okay. That's what I had to ask. We just make up names for capital projects that we don't even talk about? I'm just trying to get this for transparency.
Right, so I want to point it out. These projects, the list you have, they go from 2008. So this is really a multi-year process.
Okay.
And they get all adopted in the budget.
Okay, no problem, you answered my question there. Now salaries for new P and L staff, 400,000. Okay, I have a question to ask you on that. Because how many, I mean, how many employees do we have? And right now, is it like 26, 28?
Somewhere there.
Yeah, like that, okay.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have a point of information. I'd like to go along what you're talking about, but can we get a copy? I don't know what you're talking about.
Actually, I'll send it to Letitia right now and she can send this over if my tablet doesn't stay here.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to say the reason why you have some of these as placeholders because these were projects that the commissioners originally in the J-LAC letter had set aside over the previous budget years. So those are placeholders with the name recognition for, you all did not vote to move forward with the mobile command station because the last letter came back. But it stays as a placeholder and the money is not spent without approval from the commissioners. And so it is not a thing saying that we're going to haphazardly just go out and purchase a mobile command. So this goes back to the original J-LAC letter that was sent. It has on there, but that does not mean it is a placeholder. And so I just want us to be clear that no one from staff is going to be trying to purchase a mobile command center with those funds.
I actually totally agree with you. I know you're not purchasing and it would have to come back. I'm just, my question is, we have fake capital projects that actually should be in reserves, but instead we make up all these names. That's all, that was all my question. So I am in total, total agreement with you.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Wait, I'm not.
Okay. Go ahead, yeah, go ahead and finish.
Yeah, I am, I am total, total agreement. I know you're not doing that. I was asking a question with the budget, you know. Okay. And then the permanent licensing for new employees, we have 400,000 dollars in there. Have we actually hired any and how many were?
No, it was not, it was not approved. And I believe at the time, I believe it was 24, 23 years. I want to say they looked at three or four people at the time. But if you recall during budget season, it was not approved.
Okay. In budget season, we didn't approve the hire?
When we did our conversations.
Yeah, right, I remember that. That's why I'm just curious, why do we still have that align holding money?
Because we did not get direction what to do with that. Basically, you see, these projects.
When we just put it back in reserves?
Yeah, let me just finish. So these projects, really, that's what we reported to J-LAC. So all this project on the list to J-LAC. So the way we look at it now, we due to another letter to the J-LAC. And we will address all of this. Are we going forward or not?
Okay, that's great. That's fine, I'm just asking.
No, no.
Why, why, why it's not going into reserve and they're staying there? And then another question I have, okay, so if you look at 217, 2025 permit, and I remember the marine, the boat we approved, we have three boats now. But I'm looking at here, vehicle and equipment total, 1 million dollars, 583,440 dollars for the budget. Okay, and then I go back over to 318, adding that up, there's two right there, which is 247,000 and something, 559,000, that's 108,800, I mean, 800, 800, 8,822. Okay, so we're looking at a million, almost practically, gosh, that's a lot of money. Almost what, 2 million? These F-150, how many, we have what, 27, 28 employees? How many actually drive and how many actually stay in the office? Do you know that?
I can tell you, but I would say most of them do drive.
Most of them, okay. So these F-50s we are getting for the year, how much, I mean, are we spending that kind of money? Or are they getting a new F-150 every couple of months? I'm just not sure.
I believe this year there was no purchases made. And because per your direction.
Okay.
And also I want to point out, when you look at that, you see you have budget, you have current activity, you have previous activities. So all you're looking at, it's multi-year activity for that project.
So they're just in counts and study, right?
It was happening over the years. So since the inception of each of this project, when you look at the activity, that's what's happening.
Okay.
So please don't think it's fiscal 2025.
I was just asking how we spent down the 19,000 and this is what you gave me. So that's why I just have questions, why all this is in capital projects and we're not actually using this. And I think this will be my last question. I just have, I mean, I see where it says confirmed projects and I see the bow and everything. And I remember, you know, proving all this. Now, the question I have right here, it states, and I just got this yesterday, so I really haven't been able to really go through it. That's why I need, you know, verification what's going on.
Exactly, Commissioner, there's a lot going on in this piece of property.
Right. And I know I'm not getting, and I haven't received any dates or anything. We purchased this and that. So that's why I'm really having to ask you this stuff. And then over here, it says rehab building code facility, 975,000. Now that building, I believe is on Palmetto, we still rent that building or have, did we buy a building?
That is not, that's code.
Yeah, but that's on this?
No, that is not, this is the.
It says rehab building code facility. What is that?
I see the project, but I cannot tell you which particular building it is. We can't get that information to you.
So that's not the code building?
No, I believe that's the code building.
Do you know what it is?
She said, she, she said she couldn't.
No, I don't know.
But she just gave me this yesterday.
Yes, I know, I know we gave it to you, but I don't know what that building is, particularly this one.
Andy may know the exact.
Maybe Andy, I don't know.
Andy's behind you.
Okay.
Sorry, that's the training center for their use.
At the Marina?
At the Marina.
At the Marina, okay.
They've rehired that for a training center.
Right, and that's just for the permit or licensing Marina thing? And I remember approving, yeah, I remember approving that. So the rehab, did we have any storm-related damage or anything there? We did? And we get reimbursed by FEMA or anything for that?
The training center building, David Waller, probably Works Director. Training center building sustained a little bit of roof damage most recent. From we have made repairs, we'll submit in our grants, request to FEMA. We won't know for several years whether we actually get our reimbursement though.
Okay, and so we've already fixed those problems, correct?
Yes, ma'am, they've been fixed.
Okay, that's all I have. If there's a way that I get some dates and stuff of the vehicles and what other capital projects we have that we just put fake names instead of putting it in reserve, that would be really great. Thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
Here's my question, so I just want you to clarify because when we say stuff like fake names made up, that it's, it can be confused rights because, so what you're saying is we wrote the letter to J-LAC. This is the stuff that we put in the letter.
Not all of it.
I want to, these are the things that we put in the letter for them. And then some of them have not been approved. Is that technically, go over that a little more. I think you need, and I think you need to go over that just a little bit more so that we all can be on one page with that.
I'll try to bring some clarity to. So we received a couple of J-LAC letters and we had put in particular items of wanting to do this. As you all know, we put in that we were going to acquire a building. It came back that we could not acquire a building after a couple of times, so we removed that. We came back that we could not acquire a mobile permitting center. So we're not going forward with that. But these are all placeholders on the books of things that have been approved over many years to go forward. And that's why Natalia was saying that if you all make a decision and say you want all of these items moved into a reserve account, account 1, 2, 3, 4, we'll move 2 million, 3 million, but that has not been decided. And so when we do need to do something or move something, we transfer those funds into a new account, which we will do if you all approve for us to go over tonight on that. So the J-LAC letters, we're following the same procedures that we were required to. Those were items that we put in the original J-LAC letter that you all have made a decision not to move forward on. So they will not be updated if we go forward with this.
So now we need to come back together and we to decide, hey, we would like to move these things to reserve accounts.
A reserve account.
A reserve, come on.
To move, move to a, a reserve account.
I just want to add one point of clarification, Andy Holmes, Assistant City Manager. At the time that each of those projects were established, they were real projects. They were never a fake project. And as the commission gave us direction not to move forward, they're a project that's now inactive. And I assume you're going to give us direction now to move those funds into a reserve account. And of course, we'll do that.
Thank, thank you. With clarification because I think it's important. Because we don't want to send a message to the residents that something nefarious is transpiring.
Maybe I need to bring.
This is a, a typical budgeting procedure from my experience that I've seen people do as placeholders, so.
I agree with you, there's placeholders. I have been going through the budget and we have a lot of projects that are placeholders that, that no one's ever said anything. And I went through the budget with a previous manager, not, not saying nothing else about Mr. Feacher or anything because some of this stuff is like the mobile permitting center. But a lot of stuff gets put in reserves. But we have so much stuff with, I'm going to say fake, I'm, I'm going to say it. Because there are a lot, some of this stuff in the budget are fake projects. That we put placeholders and it was actually said to me at another committee meeting during the budget, not with permanent licensing. So I'm, I'm a little bit different here. There is some stuff that just doesn't make any sense to me. And I've been asking for dates. I want to know when we are spending these dates for all these vehicles too. Because I feel like we got less employees for permanent licensing, which I know it's total separate budget and you cannot use permanent licensing for the police department. But this is crazy how much money is in placeholders for how many employees we have for permanent licensing for vehicles.
Commissioner, she just said that we did not purchase vehicles because you all did not approve.
But we have so much money in placeholders, I get it.
We're going to spend the money. And if Tom Lee and the folks at Alhassan don't deliver, we're going to build a building, you know. And I have my reservations about whether they'll deliver, but we'll see. So I think we all agree, we're going to spend the money. Yes?
In regards to these projects, capital projects that we did not approve, why are they going into capital projects if we haven't even approved them yet? I understand where you're coming from because now if we have all these placeholders, I understand that we may have voted no on it, may have happened X amount of time ago. But if I'm not aware of how much we have in reserves and what we need to spend, how do we eliminate this issue with? Exactly, so I, I would like to.
It's very simple.
Okay.
It's exactly, it's actually what we just asked you all to say, move all of these funds into reserve.
Any projects right now that have not been approved by us, I think should automatically go into reserves, not be held there until one of us tells them to do that? No?
That's the way that we.
If vote no.
Go ahead, go ahead.
In terms of process, before we bring an agenda item due for approval or consideration and approval, we have to have the money in an account for that project. It's required. We can't just come to you and say, will you approve this project? And have this vague fund balance in reserves and we say it's going to cover it. We have to have that money allocated to that project before we put the agenda item on the agenda.
So basically tonight, we're.
Sufficiency certified.
Tonight, we're, we're, we're moving the money, we're giving them permission. That's why I'm saying be clear that we are being prepared to be able to appropriate, to be able to, to spend this money. It's not just, in the future, when they're going to come back and say, this is how much it's going to cost, the money is already going to be in that fund.
Andy, make that clear for me again. So let's say you were coming forward, mobile permitting, let's say the center, the mobile thing, okay? So all that money needs to be there before you present it to us in a project and not in the reserve. It's not allowed in the reserve. It's not allowed in the reserve.
Natalia has to sign a form.
Okay, no, but, no, I'm asking. You're saying that, let's say the mobile center beforehand, you had to go to the manager, to her and say, oh, put this in a capital project and then we'll bring it again, instead of leaving it in the reserve and saying we have the money in the reserve?
Right.
Is that one of our policies that we have?
Is that our policy?
That's our policy, right? City sufficient funds, I remember.
So can I have that policy?
Yeah, sure.
Send to me, thank you.
It's in your book.
Okay.
Every agenda item, they are approved tonight.
But that's just the city of Daytona Beach policy?
It's our policy, yeah.
We follow it.
Okay, thank you.
This sufficient?
Way before when I got here.
Those code persons have been since before 2000 when I got here. I think some of them date to the 1970s.
Okay.
It's a good, it's a good thing.
So on the mobile, after we said no, is there a reason why, please, I'm trying to make sure everybody can hear you. Is there a reason why it wasn't taken out completely after we said no and put in reserve?
Is that we did not get any direction what to do with this project?
Well, we gave direction.
Now you did, right, but.
But no, we gave direction a while back in the mobile, there's even a newspaper article.
We gave direction not to spend.
Right, but shouldn't it go back into reserve?
No, that's it.
Not to me, I will be honest with you.
So anytime there's a cap, capital project and we say no, we need to make sure we sit up here and say, hey, make sure you put that in the reserve right away?
Right, because at the time when we create the project, it become a project, legit project.
Okay.
It's indicated out, all three projects created by P and L and reported to the state. So right now, for us, after reporting to the state, remove them, we would need commission action.
And I'm glad, really glad at this conversation. And I'm glad, really glad that this conversation is happening, because I'm kind of wanting, I've really sat up here and said, put something back in reserves.
Yeah, I feel like they're all still not there.
How, no, I'm talking about over the years, not just this particular project. So, but these are projects that are going forward, moving forward from the, from years past.
Right.
Okay, all right, I got it now, thank you.
And I just want to point out, you're kind of, too, uh, because, again, because that is has such attention, and this project being reported to the state. So for us, we have to be extremely careful. You know, to get direction from you, from the committee to move.
Well, should we be given direction to you with all this money we have from, um, vehicles? That are in projects right now in budgets?
The direction is, is, is simple, you're gonna move the money into one fund, right?
If that is direction, and the reason that might set aside that way is because you're going to hire new employees that will need equipment if you all went forward with that.
Well, how many employees were we planning on hiring, 400,000?
I, I can't recall how many, um, employees were there, but don't look at it as just a salary.
Right, I know you're insurance, and I, I get that, but it's a lot of money. But I'm just, I was just curious, how many employees were we gonna hire? And why we needed that much money for vehicles? So can we move all that money into a reserve? Since we're not using it?
Right.
And then we have money in reserves?
It, it, it doesn't, that's not something that matters to me. I don't know, I don't care if you move it to reserves. It doesn't matter to me, because this is an accounting procedure in practice that is not disruptive, it doesn't, it lack integrity, it's, it's.
It's not transparent.
It's transparent for me, because I know what I'm looking at when I see it.
But the residents don't know what they're looking at.
I, I don't, I don't agree. So it doesn't matter to me, if the commission, if you all want to move to the reserves, I will defer to you, but I don't, I don't, I think that we are, um, so I, I'm not in agreement.
I don't care.
Because every cent from the budget, everything being approved by you, by the commission. So, as the mayor pointed out, this money will not be spent without your knowledge and approval.
I understand that.
So the way I look at that, it's still under your full control, and we only use, is your direction.
Yeah, I, I completely understand that. And, um, can you, I, I want to ask one last question, and I'm totally done. So, when we take money, um, out of permanent licensing for IT, like buying, um, laptops, whatever we're doing, and you're only allowed to use that in permanent licensing, can you explain? I think he was trying to explain a little bit why you do that, but can you explain why we take pockets of money out of permanent licensing for IT?
Well, we take for IT, we don't only take from permanent licensing. We do this allocation on each department. So basically, how it's happening, uh, IT at the beginning of budget year, budget, so they look at number of employees in each department, in each fund. They look at how many devices being used by each department, each fund, and they have those calculated.
And then you take money out of different permits for.
So, and after that, we do allocations, and money being allocated once a month. So we have monthly allocations.
And you're allowed to take the money from permanent licensing and using it for.
Yes, we are, we have to, because.
553.80 specifically allows permanent licensing fees to be used for the operating costs of permanent licensing. If we're back office things like shared use technology, that's a reasonable way to allocate those costs.
And then, like, you can buy, let's say, computer screens for every single department within the city of that, okay?
So it's all being calculated then.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I wrote the first J-LAC letter when Mr. Chisholm was still here. I'm Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. I want to try to bring some clarity to the entire thing, because the audit creates a picture as it relates to particular funds for permits and licensing. There's a set number of num, things in there. The Mobile Command Center was one of the first things that was considered, it was rejected, but there was also reference in the J-LAC letter early on, in terms of ways the funds that needed to be expended would be expended. And as you go through, it's, it's like a piece of property. It's showing a consistent picture of what's happened with funding decisions the commission may have considered and rejected, that's the Mobile Command Center. But you have to have sufficiency of funds for any project you propose to expend. That's part of the process that's been in the budget. So when that happens, and these are not funds that you can just say, fine, we're gonna send them to reserve. You've got to maintain them as a part of the permit and licensing funds, because funds are subject to the requirements that you, that you return. The monies need to be excess or above the cost of doing the work that permits and licensing is to do. So, you don't just take that money and say, great, we'll transfer it to reserve now, we're gonna spend it on the general fund. In respect to expenditure of money for IT, the money intended from PNL for IT is for I and T things related to permits and license, not to the whole city, it's just permits and licensing. And we can't spend PNL money to say, I don't know, for parks and rec. We can't take that money and transfer it over. From the standpoint of the vehicles, the same thing, the vehicles are purchased and used for permit licensing, to do the function of those inspectors. And at the time the decision was made to consider hiring more employees, you had a, a permits and licensing department issuing a record number of permits. That's why there's so much money. There's been so much growth and so much work by permits and licensing. And you have employees where people were waiting and waiting for permits, and we had to go turn around period, do the work, but the work was getting done. It looked like more employees would be needed. We're seeing now that that trend has maxed out, and probably we won't be needing employees, and y'all have decided not to do that. We have hired employees to do flood management and control, which were people that we didn't have before. I think there's two of those folks onboard that we have put in, in terms of new employees. In terms of the other things that have happened, I think questions were asked and answered in such a way that you'd think that money was being filtered out to other things and kept a secret. That's not the case, nor are there any fake names. If you're gonna build a park, there's a park out on LPGA. It is a project, it has number, a name assigned to it, it isn't fake. That stuff that city commission has put money into, and would you fund it just the ABC fund? No, you want to know what you're doing with that money. So something's given a name so you can understand it. It's not like someone made it to hide money. It's made up to identify an action that you have suggested, or the commission, a, or a commissioner may think is appropriate. So you say, it's the park out on LPGA. It's the Rayner Park, that's what, it has a name, wasn't made up. I guess it was made up. Somebody decided on that, and decided to call it that, and then it became that name. So when I say to you, Rayner Park, you know what I'm talking about. If I say to you, Mobile Command Center, you know what I'm talking about. Anything else, you talk about the building. We talked about buying a building or having a site. You know which buildings it was, you had a lot of discussion. Those were names given so you could identify it. We had three I could consider. The commission's conclusion was, we're not gonna do that. From a standpoint of the site ending J-LAC, looking back, these things are listed and proposed. What happened to that? It just disappeared? Where is it? You trace the line of everything you've done, so that the people who are doing the J-LAC, any on it, can take a look and determine whether or not you've done what you should be doing, or if you didn't do what you said you would do initially. And a suggestion from administration that Mobile Command Center would be something that could be used as a part of a permitting licensing operation. It wasn't just for the police department, dual use. That was rejected by the commission, and that's fine. That still was PNL money. So it stayed in PNL green, it wasn't transferred to reserves. There's a good reason not to do that, because it's got to be seg, it has to be segregated. You cannot mix it in. That's the aspect of doing this. So we're going through the audit and responding to J-LAC, and they know, yes sir.
So, the reserve fund?
Yes, sir.
You can't spend the money from a reserve fund and have to go back into this fund anyway?
Yes, sir. It's, it's generated segregated source, it's got to be protected, and the thing for that is.
Doesn't contribute anything to send it to the reserve fund.
No, sir, it does not. You, you could, you, it's, if it's a reserve, it's a limited reserve for only PNL. So you could put it back in a pool, and I think part of that you're seeing with the discussion tonight is if you transfer it back in, let's just have building and rehabilitation acquisition. I forget the number, I did look at the list, but whatever number, let's say that's $4 million. It just becomes $4 million that's sitting there that could be dedicated towards expenditures and Andy has described to you tonight, if the commission decides to proceed. Now, if you go through the RFP process, which is a proceeding item that you've got to do, you've got very detailed requirement people to bid on. So you don't make it up and say, build me a three-story building over there, and it's got 3,000 square feet in it, or whatever it is. You have very detailed requirements so contractors can bid it, and you know what your pricing is. Now, purchasing process, one that leads to higher expenses than you pay if you're just on the street building the building, because contractors all know they can price these things as they wish, but that's an aspect of the local government. Nevertheless, the money's got to be there, the inspectors got to be there. You've got to have the ability for contractors that are gonna bid, they're uniformed. So, developing the RFP that Andy is talking about is something coming forward. You're not funding anything other than creation of item where somebody could respond. In the meantime, you got to bill in Tallahassee that may or may not be passed. You've also got a time demand that you have from J-LAC committee to do things within a timely fashion. What do you do? You've got some choices, now you've got one choice. You're gonna do in terms of building, or refund to contractors that paid the money. They'll never see that in homes, it'll be going back to the businesses that built the homes. Or you can wait, see, if you have two choices, is the bill gets approved, and it's law, and you can do something there, or you can spend it on, and then you debate the merits of those things. In the meantime, though, you've got to be able to show everybody, the public, J-LAC, and anybody else that wants to look, where was that money, and how did you look at this? How'd you get this far? In terms of you had the money, you knew there was something you were supposed to by law expend somehow, or refund, what you're gonna do with it? You have tracking in the names of the things you've given it with the amounts that are attached to it, and in the end, you can cite, when things have been spent, as an example, trucks, you can identify that down to the last pin, because they've been purchased. Now, what happens to those trucks when they circulate through? They may be used by departments later, so it's an expense that doesn't come from the general fund, because those trucks have been circulated out of that entity, that's a different discussion altogether, but the J-LAC expenditures were appropriate. That's how this has been managed. It's at the beginning, it's been a process where the commission has had decisions to make, you've had policy questions to answer, and you're at the point that you're at now, where you've got choices available to you, and maybe another choice coming that you want to wait for. So to be able to respond with the building, you need the RFP. Be able to do the other things, you need the identification from the legislature. And then you got to decide, if it's over here legislative part, can you do the pumps and so on, but actually improve stormwater system versus the sewer system? Those are all things that need, that's all we've got.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for, that was such great information, so I really appreciate you putting that on the record. You're absolutely right. Can we do the generator pumps? I did, actually, he did call me, so hopefully he's gonna clarify that. Just like you were bringing forward, we buy the mobile station that you said we could, and I told you you couldn't by state law. But, all, everything that you just mentioned was really great, I'm glad it was on record, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any? So we know what direction we're going in? You know what to do, staff? Okay, in terms of money? Okay, yes, you have a question?
Just for the record, I'm not for adding, doing this project.
Okay, do we, do we have a consensus that's for the managers?
And I'll agree with Commissioner Paris.
So you're not in, in favor of the project?
No, I'll agree with Commissioner Paris.
Okay.
Not in favor of the building?
The building, that's what we're, so, take a vote on that. Do we have a motion to accept what they've concluded? What the manager is proposing in this, I need a motion in a second.
Second.
They have a motion in a second? All right, we'll take public comment? No public comment? John, come on.
So the motion is to pursue the steps needed to issue an RFP for construction of the building is.
Correct.
Okay, John Nicholson, Beachside. For years, we've been talking about a new, um, city hall. This way, to me, of getting it, needing it too. We need to expand, um, need to spend the money. I'm not happy that we lost $3 million, because we gave it back to the developers. That money could have been helped. Uh, I know suspended, uh, fees and whatnot, but we have the property, we're not buying the property. We're keeping a parking, which we absolutely need. So, we get this, keep the money. We get the building that we need for, uh, permits and licensing, and get an expanded city hall, all in one. So I'd ask you to really get a passing this, thank you.
Okay, do we have any others? All right.
Just, if I can, you know, if, if, if you don't approve this motion in, in order to get a sufficient guide on what they're gonna do J-LAC, which is, I think, before next commissioning, you, April 4th, okay? Because you'll need to consider those steps, too.
Yeah, I, I hope my colleagues will not, um, compel us to have to give this back. I think this is a good, good motion, and a good gesture.
You're not having to give the money to the state, so I don't know why all that keeps coming in? That's not how it works.
No, not the state, I mean, it's not the state.
They're giving more money back, I'm curious.
The developers, if we do not spend the money, ultimately, that's what will end up happening.
Just, just to be clear, there are actually three choices currently, and.
Correct.
Jim, Jim, uh, uh, omitted that we can reduce fees, as we've recently done, we waived fees recently.
I'm over that.
Yeah.
And, I, I agree, I, if we can use this for storm, for our residents, I'd rather do that. And I'm okay to build on if we're gonna use, impact these, but I need to see something, how we're gonna find the rest of the money. He said he has some money in city hall, I mean, but I don't have plans in how much it's actually gonna cost. And I think she's the same with me. We can't just approve something and we don't have a price.
We have not approved anything, and then for them to have the right to go out and to bring it back before us. That's, that's all we will be approving. Did you have something, Commissioner?
My, my concern continues to be that we build something, then can we support it? Or do you have to keep expanding at some level in terms of taxes to be able to afford it? That's my big concern, we have buildings, and can we maintain them?
I mean, just like we have the rec center that's been there since I've been up there five years, I still haven't heard anybody say what we're doing with the rec center. And look at it.
All right, Doyle, you, you want to speak? Fill out paper after you speak. You don't have to fill it out, just give us your name, then fill it out after. Just, just talk.
My name is Doyle Lewis. And, it's interesting that almost no one knows what they're doing here. If you don't have a direction.
I got a direction.
You are lost. If you don't know what you're doing, you are lost. I'm a builder, that's what I do for a living, until I came here and thought y'all were lost. But, now, you know why? I'll tell you why. Spend that money and build that building, because of one reason, just one. You know that? You know what I'm saying? How are they gonna get money if they spent in the building? Go ahead and do it. I'm a builder, that's what I do for a living. Spend that money, then they can't get it. Then you have it. A fit of dreams, baseball. You think I'm kidding? I'm not. I live in the United States, and I'm a free man, for a reason. Got married once, I tried that once, won't do it again. You know why? I'll tell you why. Daddy came with the girl, you'd have left me alone. Spend that money, can't get it. Taxman can't get it. Build it, now. Have a direction, stop being confused. My name is Doyle Lewis, I'm a builder, United States.
Hello, hello, hello. First, I'd like to thank God for saving Donald Trump, making America great again, and thank you Elon Musk for finding all the.
Hold it, hold, this is, we're speaking on a specific, we're speaking on, and it's not public comment.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak on that.
Yeah.
$20 million you're talking about? $20 million, come on now. And then, uh, oh, I, I thought I was gonna freely, I'm, uh, when can I speak freely?
At the end of the meeting, you can come back at the end and just talk away.
All right.
Three minutes, you'll get three minutes to talk.
10-4.
Okay, all right, we, do we have a motion in a second? Who is the motion from? Strickland and Reed? Okay, we're gonna take a roll call vote to, um, clarify that we're giving the manager the oversight to bring back, um, a proposal for the construction of a, what do you call it? P and L building, City Hall Center. All right, uh, we start with who, Commissioner Henry?
No. Commissioner Cantu?
Commissioner Cantu?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Paris?
No.
Mr. Strickland?[1777.42]
No.
Mr. Strickland?
Yes.
Mr. May?
No.
Mayor Derrick Henry?
Yes. Motion carries four-three. So we go to... That's our last item?
That's our last item.
Start with Commissioner Paris?
Or Cantu.
Oh, it's Cantu? She was the first vote? Okay.
I'm ready. I do have a question, the rec center, since I just brought it up. I'm going five years, and this thing, we're not doing anything. What are we waiting for? Are we going to do something with it? Are we going to tear it down? I mean, it's five years. I'm still looking at this thing. Five years I've been up here. And I could have swore when Ann Ruby and all them did their law presentation that we directed staff to come back, and it wasn't supposed to be as many years. And what is going on?
If you call that during the master plan study process, you asked for us to put that a part of that discussion. All of you have been invited. Probably got an email to over that master plan where that will be discussed, brought forward at final presentation to the commissioners at once. And so the reason why nothing just happened on that is because during the master plan process, you all asked for us to wrap in the Orange Avenue Rec Center, which is what we did. And you should have already received an email from either Lynette or Sandra or from David Waller to have a meeting with the consultants before they bring out a product to the committee in April.
Okay, so that rec center will be in April?
Part of the discussion, all of our parts are it.
Great. It's just been so long, and the residents are asking, and we don't hear anything.
I forgot about it, actually.
Right. And actually, I think that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Henry?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Reed?
Yes, I just want to remind everyone about the Midtown Concert Series, March 29th. The band that's coming is out of Jacksonville, The Groove Smooth Jazz. I heard this group while I was at a State Cluster for Delta, and it was a three-man band. And I said, "Y'all got to come to Daytona." And they said, "We've already been there," but it rained that night, and we ran our cars, tooting our horns and flashing our lights as applause. They're bringing a five-member band for us. Line dancing starts at 6:30, and the band plays from 7 to 9. The Groove Smooth Jazz out of Jacksonville. They are thebomb.com. I hope you everyone there, come on out. Free concert.
What is it? What day is it?
The 29th, so next week.
Okay, next weekend. I'll be in town. I may go.
I just want to remind everyone, if you haven't nominated your sesquenntennial person, I think there's no N in there. Anyway, if you haven't nominated your person yet, please send it to Letitia. I want to have it by the next meeting, if that's possible. The other thing is, they have the Children's Business Fair is going to be at the Road front Esplanade. I love that. I went with Commissioner Reed one year, so that's going to be on Saturday, March 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., 355 North Beach Street. So that's north of International Speedway on Beach. Also, our fire department's celebrating 100 years today, or yesterday. Yesterday, so happy 100th birthday. And the first walls went up for the new fire station on Ridgewood, too, so that's exciting. Just another reminder. So tonight, we approve new gym equipment for the Dickerson Center, so once that's installed, just want everybody to come on down and exercise for free. So Monday through Friday, 8 to 8. They do have gym equipment now, but make sure you utilize it because we do do this stuff for the residents, so I hope you guys get to use it. The other thing was, I just had a couple of follow-ups on impact fees because you saw what the county gets for impact fees and what we get for impact fees. We haven't up... I'm sorry.
Needs to be changed.
Right. So I'm just... It's been a long time.
It's a process.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to, sure.
Yeah. Commissioner Paris sent an email earlier to provide updates, and we do have updates for you. And so thank you for sending in the email so we can get these. The impact fee study process has been going on. They've had onsite meetings with staff to look at our impact fees and did research. Raf Telus is working on the final document, bring that so we can have a full timeline, and hopefully it will be coming out soon. But they've met our staff and looking at the items from a financial standpoint of what our impact fee should be. So hopefully, I mean, in the next month or so, we'll have something back to you, letting you know the timeline when we can start to do some implementation.
One month?
Hopefully in a...
Okay.
But we'll find out. Natalia's going to follow up with them.
Okay.
You asked about the Environmental Committee. Andy Holmes and Jim Morris worked on it, so he's going to come up and make the presentation to put something on the agenda at the next meeting, but he wanted to provide you with a memo of what their requests are.
Okay.
Andy, do you want to give that to him?
You give it. Andy, you probably give it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Jim Morris, we spoke with some staff, we met with the city manager, and we called the following recommendations for an environmental advisory board for your consideration. Eight up seven berths from zone appointed by each commissioner, one at large appointed by the mayor. Meetings, they would meet at the request of the commission by majority vote of the commission. The board would review specific ordinances requested by the commission. Essentially, they would work at your direction and for you. They would make a recommendation within 90 days after they met. The recommendations would be forwarded if they received a majority of the votes from the commission or from the board. And then the board would have a court of five members, but recommendations would need a minimum of four votes to be sent to the city commission. Commission accept recommendations, modify, or reject them only advisory and only on ordinance, not on projects. So that's what the staff has put together for your consideration, and we will bring an agenda item at your direction.
So they would only meet on occasion? It wouldn't be a regular meeting? And the board makes recommendations within 90 days after their meeting?
It's up to you all if you want...
I don't think they need to meet every month, or so? I think if that... Do y'all have a difference of opinion? This is not a board that's a meet regularly.
When you say not projects, what does that mean?
Is that their reviews would be for the commission, on the behalf of the commission, related to ordinances and not reviewing individual projects.
We didn't have a chance to talk about this, and this looks fine to me, but just to clarify, I would not recommend that you have the environmental board weigh in on any proposed development applications either, because those are all going to be reviewed in a quasi judicial manner, and they need to be decided by the planning board and city commission.
That's what he's saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just to be clear. Some of those are ordinances, but they still shouldn't be reviewed by the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they should be given policies about what we should be doing.
Well, this was some brought up, our charter review committee. So can I refer to my representative on it? Ann?
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. The purpose of the environmental impact board, the environmental board, review board, as I understood it, was to review projects, but in a way that's similar to the redevelopment committees, so that it would be an advisory board, not a quasi judicial board, but that they would be given in ways, so that every project that came in could get a review. How can we make this better for the environment?
Okay, that's different.
That's different. So that's but it's my memory. So I suggest...
Is that...
And Paul Zimmerman was the one who actually proposed that, so I think he would be... He's not here, obviously, but I think might want to be consulted because that was his... That was my impression.
Regardless of the charter review committee's recommendation, that was their perspective, I would strongly recommend against you having an environmental committee review quasi judicial applications.
Yes. But doesn't the Beachside Redevelopment Board, and they review those applications, too, don't they?
They do, and you'd be adding a third layer to that.
Yes, but the point was the point, to add a third layer, just to look, be advisory on the environmental impacts and environmental recommendations. That's, that I think was the intention, so...
I think that would require an exhaustive review of the Land Development Code to see which types of applications actually need to trigger environmental review, because any of them don't. I mean, it's a common, a common point of confusion, for example, is whether a plan development would have environmental impacts when those are really typically reviewed at a site plan stage or at a plat stage, and typically reviewed by state or federal agencies and not the city. So you'd be introducing a level of chaos into a decision that needs to be based on criteria that we have in the Land Development Code, and that it would lead to worse decision-making and harder to defend in court.
So you're saying, so the way this is being proposed is that the environmental committee would have ability to look at proposed ordinances and changes and how... I mean, you're kind of...
Tax changes to the LDC, other ordinances that create or alter environmental policy? I think is what their intent is, although, like I said, I had a chance to talk to them.
Well, like I said, this is something that Zimmerman proposed. I think it might be nice to get clarification from him rather than just Mike.
Drew Driscoll, deputy city manager and fire chief. I was the manager's representative on the charter review committee, and in attendance was Ms. Lamanna and also Attorney Gross. What they are proposing is what came out within that charter review report, and I'd rather provide that so you could see the actual words that we provided, but it was not to review projects, but originally designed to be trade professionals' experience within that field to review our ordinances such as the Land Development Code and make advisory board make recommendations to this board for consideration, but not to review projects. But we have the charter review report, and we could refurnish that again, so you have the exact language of what was penned by the committee.
And can we attach that to the presentation for approval at the next meeting with Andy?
I will deliver it to him personally.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
I will say that if the commissioners want to go different from that, you have that authority, too, so...
I don't see anybody.
The thing is, when they brought it up, we just said that we would implement it, so that's why we didn't put it on the ballot of what it was supposed to be. But I'll get together with Ben and Drew and you guys to see what we could do. That's it for today. Thank you.
Okay.
Last time we met, we were in the middle of Bike Week. I think we had a really good Bike Week. I think attendance is down. If you listened and watched, you would know that without the GO fencing thing, it's controversial at this point about the numbers are. I was a little sad and disappointed that somehow or another, the news poll wanted to give the Daytona Beach Bike Week credit for the shooting down on 44 in New Myrna Beach. I don't particularly like that, but, you know, on the other hand, for 30 years, people talk about Bike Week, they mention at Coleslaw Wrestling. That's 25 miles out in the middle of nowhere, too. But anyway, we had a good Bike Week. You Coleslaw wrestle? Y'all laughing?
Share time.
Share time. And I have, I have one other thing. It's not going to be popular, but I'm going to bring it up anyway. I want to make a motion that we, as a commission, direct our city attorney to cease working for the shelter.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? Where's Commissioner Reed? She didn't hear that.
You made a motion, and you got to say it.
And just for clarification, I think the way that motion would work is we'd terminate the contract with First Officer, provides for office of services.
Will the shelter afford their own attorney?
I think that folks can afford what you make them afford. So I'm not going to begrudge that. So I do believe that, yeah, if they had to do it, they would have to do it. I don't think it's cost-effective, and I certainly don't recommend it. So, no, I don't. Don't, definitely don't recommend it. Okay.
And why don't you recommend it?
I don't recommend it, but for one, the financial cost of it is exorbitant. For the level of service that we receive, it's, I believe, it's a lot. And if you paying that out to another private entity, you know, I don't get in the lead...
They're pretty...
Yeah, if we, you know...
Would the other cities be able to pitch in a little bit and help with an attorney as well?
Well, they pitch in to the shelter, all the cities that participate.
But actually not like the county would like them to do, because they don't pitch in as much as we do in the county.
So we already have our base, our base that we're paying supporting, correct? We have our bond deposits. And then we also have extra services that we're providing in addition to that, correct? Which with the attorney services are considered extra services, bill hours. And so the other cities are doing what? Are they doing some sort of sharing process? We're just taking in all of it?
No, they don't do any of the other... Well, there's really nothing else that they would do other than give money. All of us give money, and some of them, I think, give reasonable proportions to their use of the shelter, actually, almost all of them. We're the ones who use the shelter overwhelmingly more than anyone else. And the second to that is the county, who gives the second most... Port Orange is the only one that I think should give a little more. That's my opinion. All the rest of them, I think, I'm pleased with what they give, for the amount of service that they get.
So all this whistleblower stuff, we wouldn't even known what was going on if there was another attorney?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, that would be my responsibility to keep you apprised of what transpired with the shelter as representative to board.
Right.
So...
So that's why if he's doing two separate things, he's working for the shelter and then doing a city, how is that a conflict? I mean, what exactly... That's what I'm trying to find out. I know we'll be in suit.
Growth on a forthcoming lawsuit is com...
Right. But can you tell how that's a conflict?
I don't believe it is a conflict. And obviously, if the commission collectively thought it was, I would bow out regardless of that. I've checked with the Florida bar. I don't currently have a conflict. The litigation could create a conflict. It hasn't at this point.
And if it would...
I would have to get the approval of both you and First Officer to continue unless determined it was irreconcilable, in which case I wouldn't be able to continue.
And you wouldn't provide your law degree in the first place, correct?
No, but as we talked about last time, I've got two of a seven-member city commission who are expressing concerns about that, which creates a concern for me because I need to have trust of all of the commissioners in order to give effective advice and assistance.
So for me, it's more about expense. Ethically, I trust your judgment in what you do. That's where you're the city attorney. For me, it's the expense. We're already incurring a lot of it, and then incurring more. The work that you're doing for the shelter, it's not pro bono, it's on city time. So that's dollars, extra dollars we're investing into it. So I mean, I think it's interesting if the rest of the cities would maybe figure out what that cost is and share in the cost of the attorney.
First at the shelter, remember, is not a function of the cities. It's a function of the board. We appoint the board and the cities are lobbied to fund the shelter, just like we lobbied the county, just like we have the mayor's gala to raise funds. So everything else is a fundraising effort.
Are the other cities having galas the way we are?
Of course.
Are they doing? Okay.
At the end of the day, it's going to fall back on us to get an attorney. So whether we're doing it with him or whether we go out and pay somebody $150,000 a year to, I don't know how much it would cost, but however much it would cost, it would still fall back on us to do that. So either way, we're going to be in, right?
But why is it falling on us?
No, it wouldn't fall back on, it would fall back on the shelter.
It would fall back on the shelter, but it's our shelter.
And the burden of the shelter is largely our burden.
It's Daytona, right, that's the point that I'm making.
Just to the degree that you want to own that.
So are you saying that we would have to budget more money?
He'll be able to talk.
Mayor, are you saying that we would have to budget more money for an attorney?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
I realize y'all are worried about the money, but if a lawsuit comes to fruition, ends up in court, and we ask our city attorney what's going on, and he says, "Oh, it's a conflict, I can't tell you," then we're basically without an attorney that we're paying a lot of money every year to represent the city. It's time to separate that.
Now, the attorney, if it was another attorney, do we have the ability to ask the other attorney?
No.
What's going on?
No.
Except that, I think Commissioner Strickland's point is, we're currently in the lawsuit as a city. And so, and our office, as of right now, is representing the city in that lawsuit. So we wouldn't necessarily know what's happening on First Step Shelter's side of things in that instance. And in fact, we're not representing First Step Shelter in the lawsuit, they've got an attorney through their commercial insurance. Okay, so...
All right.
I think I need more information on this. I'm just listening to this now. Is there something we can bring back to the next commission? Because I don't have enough information.
I mean, you have a...
I haven't been able to really talk to him or even know what's really going on with the First Step Shelter.
Well, okay, I mean, you got a motion, you have a second. You want to continue it?
Correct.
Till a later time.
But there's a motion already on the floor, so I mean, why have to...
Can we send that motion?
Right.
Well, he might want to vote on it, I don't, okay.
And if you want to vote, you do have to ask for public comment.
Yeah, Doyle's going to speak.
We do have a speaker that wants to speak on it.
I understand Commissioner Strickland's sentiment. As your representative, let me say this before Doyle comes. The reason that the city attorney has been afforded to work on that is because of my work with the shelter largely. I don't, you know, know if the, you know, I don't know how much I want to do that work without that support. That's, you know, it's that important to me. So, go ahead, I'm just letting that be known.
My name is Doyle Lewis, homeless man, Daytona Beach. Mr. Mayor and the commissions, thank you for letting me speak. But this is going to be a strong word, I'm going to tell you. Sometimes you step to the side and let somebody else step in. Mr. Strickland is right. By bullet. I'm not going to say it to anybody but everybody, I'm going to say it to everyone. The best way to stop the bullet from hitting you is to step to the side and put somebody new in it. It's a recent in my life. Born and raised hardcore military. Take that to the bank. My name is Doyle Lewis, homeless Daytona Beach, and this commission, and this one he made me a homeless guy. Thank you.
All right. Ann Nicholson.
Ann Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. I've been involved with the shelter for 20, 25 years, all right? Even before the city decided to do it. Like it or not, it's our shelter. Like it or not, it's our people that go to the shelter. It is our responsibility. Like it or not, the relationship between the mayor and the attorney is important. And because Ben is our attorney, it makes it a lot easier for the mayor to discuss things because he's right down the hall, all right? Makes you all more comfortable in what he has to say because he's our city attorney. So when you're looking at this, I would ask you not, because we absolutely need a good attorney out there, we really do. But what Ken's not saying is that we, as a commission and we as a city, have not looked at the nitty gritty of what's happening out there. I know Ann Ruby's been asking questions and she's not been getting answers. So she's been talking about it. She's been talking to Ken about it. Ken's not getting answers. Ken is disillusioned with the First Step Shelter. We can't afford to have one of your active community members disillusioned, one of your city commissioners disillusioned, and the public disillusioned. So I'm asking you not to pass this, to keep the attorney, but also look into the shelter. Make sure that everything is above board and you have all the answers that you need and any answers to questions that she has or that Ken has get answered. But we need the attorney, we need the shelter, and we can't do anything that would screw up the shelter because we as a city cannot afford that shelter on our own. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you said something interesting, and I'm just curious, I mean, you don't have to answer, but I'm curious. You said you wouldn't do this if you didn't have the attorney, the city attorney. Did I hear you wrong?
I didn't say that I wouldn't do it, but I'm a lot more comfortable doing it because I have the city attorney.
What is there to be...
I asked, well, he gives us legal advice to the function that I function as chair of the board. I feel protected, I trust his advice in the same way that I trust his advice here. You know, and I'm not saying that another person do the job, but I don't, I don't know that, and I don't know how much that would cost or what degree I would have that familiarity with that person. And it's an important role for me in a, on a lot of levels.
So if we did not have the current attorney doing this, we'd have somebody else doing it, and we would still be, the city would still be incurring the costs for an outside person?
But the city wouldn't incur the cost of shelter, that's the cost of...
But would that fall back to us to somehow help?
No, we're not going to, we're not going to give any more money to the shelter than what we, that's going to put a strain on the shelter. But by the way, I'm of the opinion that what we give to the shelter is more than, more than fair, you know? And what we do from Ben to the staff assistants with the gala, which we raise a lot of money, but all of that is an encumbrance on the city staff that I don't take lightly. And trust me, I don't want to be in the homeless business, meaning this is not a role that I wanted to have to, as mayor, as shelter chair and mayor. I didn't want the city to have to be in this position. But it's a position we, I won't say by default, but we chose and we entered this based on what the residents told us they wanted. We entered, and, you know, I accept the role once Commissioner Woods retired from this work to step as chairperson. And frankly, it's been a very difficult road at times, not been easy. Even right now, you constantly have to try to navigate between political and what's not political, trying to make sure that we don't do anything to distract those who would give us money. So I'm going to leave it at that because I'm working on something I need to go through and finish. So, but this is coming at a good time.
And...
But I do want to add this, I don't disagree with what John just said. What John just said was that Commissioner Strickland is not happy with the shelter, and he's not happy with some of the answers that he's receiving. I do believe that, you know, it is somewhat incumbent upon us to make sure that the members of this board are satisfied with that. But I'm going to leave it at that for tonight until we get to, get a little bit further down the line and until I get some other assurances that I'm waiting on that I think is reasonable for me to talk about tonight because it's only going to make for more fodder in the newspaper tomorrow, which is what all of this is going to do.
Right.
Which throws the shelter in more chaos.
And the services, so the shelter would have to budget and we, there's no budget. And right now, you guys are trying to do the money or whatever with the different...
We're already losing money because the county is not giving up as much as they did before.
Right. So that means the services are not going to be as good as, and we're already having problems with services pretty much. I mean, not problems, but...
And remember, we had a goal of being at 100 people.
Right.
Shelter is pretty much operating at that level. But we're losing money from the county because they're not giving quite as much as they gave before.
And so how are we making that up? Is that, is that not for us to know?
Well, it is for us to know once we know, we got to work with it.
Yeah, they don't have it right now, right?
I wouldn't hide that from you, but the goal is to raise more money. We're going to take in some new members. We've taken in Deltona or another, other cities from the west side will join us.
And Daytona Beach PD, looking at this, uses, and we actually need it because we already have a problem in Daytona Beach. If you go on Facebook, all, that's all they talk about, Daytona Beach.
And my concern is, even if this was something we were going to do, I think it would be something we would need to plan for. Because you give people time to come back and say, "Hey, six months, we got to make sure we have budgeted or come up with enough money to get an attorney." You don't just go in and say, "Hey, we're going to pull our attorney and tomorrow you won't have an, you know, or next week you won't have an attorney." Even if we give them some time tonight, you give people forewarning. You let them know, "Hey, this is on the way, this is something that we're going to be doing, maybe in six months or six to a year." But I just don't think that we go in and we just pull something away from people and say, "Hey, we want you off and we want you off right now," and then people are stuck. That's not how you do people. You don't treat people that way, and you definitely don't treat your own people that way. You don't treat your own shelter that way. That's not what you do to your own shelter. You give them time to plan. And so, yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote for that tonight. But if it's something that you'd like to talk about in the future where we can give time to make plans and be fair, then sure, we can talk about it.
I think we need more information too. I just don't have enough information. I don't sit and follow the First Step Shelter all the time.
And I'm comforted in knowing that they do have legal representation through their insurance in regards to the lawsuit, which means Ben can give his undivided attention to us.
They said that the shelter has an attorney through their insurance for the lawsuit.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So Ben can give his undivided attention to us.
That's good.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we'll take a roll call vote.
Can I hear the motion again? I'm sorry, I was absent.
The motion is to discontinue the services of our city attorney to the shelter. I'm sorry, all right.
Commissioner Cantu?
I'm sorry. No.
Commissioner Henry?
No.
Commissioner Reed?
No.
Commissioner Parris?
Yes.
Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
No.
So failed three to four.
Quick follow-up question. I know that years ago, Mayor, you said you all tried to find somebody to do a pro bono. Would the commissioners like me to put out feelers to see if any of the local attorneys might be willing to do that? I'd be happy to do that.
Would love to if you did that again.
Yeah, that would be great.
That would be great. That'd be awesome. Yeah, that would be awesome. Thank you all. Okay, all right, where are we now? Commissioner Strickland, we're on you. You're done? All right, Commissioner May?
God, it'll be there yet. Okay. So I wanted to say thank you to the Halifax Historical Museum for being so kind, and I can't pull it up right now. They're sending me a little newsletter they had about the 100th anniversary of the fire department, and they were discussing that first opened up, it opened up, according to their records, amid outrage and protest from the residents who thought that it would just herald more development. And at the time, there were 10,000 residents, and they were not in favor of this at all. And so that was, and I like that the Historical Museum sends us information because we've been supporting them through various events, and the coin is very nice in the fire department. Thank you so much. I want to say thank you to the police chief because I had an incident with a resident, and it was Officer Gantry, was kind enough to help my resident and, as a veteran, disabled veteran, and I just appreciate the props with which they help this individual take care of what needs to be taken care of. And then also, I've been spending some more time at the park. It looks fantastic, but the park does require, you know, upkeep at times, right? But I love what they've done. They've maintained their trees and their vegetation, and everything looks as good as it did when they started. Given that we've had hurricanes, multiple hurricanes, I mean, they've sustained damage as well, but they always manage to look right and welcoming and inviting, and lots of people using it every single day. My business is downtown, so I'm very much aware of it. This week, we had our St. Patrick's Day event, well attended. I would like to know, how did so many people come downtown on a Monday? I was like, who are you people? Why aren't you at work? I'm at work, what are you doing? But I was like, I was really, really happily surprised. And then finally, I learned a basketball lesson. I learned not to leave a game early. Commissioner Reed, about weeks ago, I'm the city manager at the Bethune-Cookman game. I left 40 seconds early. I am new to the sport. A lot happened in 40 seconds. Ms. Goodman was texting me saying, telling me to play-play, and then I was trying to, you know, listen to it on the radio. There's a radio station, you can listen to it. I've learned a lot. Commissioner Parris, next year it'll be us. And then they went to the tournament, they did well, they made it to the semifinals. So I thought that was sweet. So congratulations. It was very, it was very lucky, it was a very exciting time. Thank you so much, have a nice evening, everyone. But please go to the park, it's very well done.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I neglected to ask a question when it was my turn, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
DeYon, what's happening Tuesday night?
Faith.
First voting, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, April 1st. That's looking April 1st, yeah.
It's the faith assembly. Is anybody else going besides me? Why am I always the only person there?
Not always the only person there.
Maybe you can...
Not always the only person there.
Why go one time? Why didn't go one time? But why are they always only targeting our city?
You used the word target? Did you use the word target? Did you say target?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Target, identify, email, I don't know if they invite any other cities.
No other cities do anything like that.
I think it's just our city and the county, and we get the same email, copy, why different bull, and like, I cannot read the, you know what I'm saying? It's like, and actually, that's what actually aggravates me, and that's why I'm not going. You have to send me that many emails? And it's always our city.
I think, and I told them, because I met with them via video a couple of weeks ago, that sometimes feel that they're kind of ingenuous with their approach and trying to back you against the wall and try to make you commit to what they want you to commit to. And that was my concern. If I'm having a conversation with you and they, and they say, "Can we get you to commit that?" No, you cannot. And what I said to them in the meeting, "You cannot get me to commit to that." I don't want to speak on something, and I remember what happened with the police chief when they, all that happened and went down with the police, with the police chief and all of that. And I don't want to get caught up saying something that, you know, I may not know all of the information, and I don't want to go by just the information that they're giving me. Now, I'm going to the meeting, I'm going to go this time. But when I was on the call, I strictly said to them, "No, please do not ask me again on this call to commit to anything. I'm not going to do that." One thing about me, I'm going to stand where I stand, I'm going to vote where I vote, but I'm not going to be in this call and you asking me 10 times, "Did you know this, this, that, and the other? Can we get you to commit to that?" No, you can't get me to commit to that. So I said to the lady, I said, "I feel like y'all try to back people against the wall with your comments and what you're sent to us, and that's a turnoff to some of the commissioners, and that's why they don't want to come or they don't want to go." Even if I believe in what you're saying, even if I agree with you...
You'll force feed me.
And a lot of times, I do agree with you. But when you force feed me and shoving it down my throat, I'm like, yeah, no, I don't operate that way. And then, I still feel like, am I the only city that you're calling? Are you only calling the city of Daytona Beach? Because where is Port Orange? Where's Ormond and Holly Hill? Where are all those people?
And the meeting is in Port Orange, isn't it? That church, Hope, something?
Yeah.
It's in, in Port Orange.
Where are their commissioners? Where are their mayors? Where are all those people? We're doing our part, and we're always going to continue to do our part.
Well, let's ask them that on Tuesday night. Hold them accountable.
Right, and most of these churches are not even in Daytona, but then they'll pick a few, excuse me, that's in your zone. Well, I'm sorry, if you're going to sit and do that, I don't care if I have your vote. And he says, "I'm running again." You know what I'm saying? And then, I wasn't even here the last commission meeting, but I was online and I was like, "What the heck? I thought there was some fight going on." And that is supposed to be a Christian sitting there saying that to you? Oh my gosh. Yeah, it's just how they, they attack you. Like the last, I think, week, I've been getting the same email by different people. Like, you don't think I can read?
That's why, I hope that answers your question. Commissioner Reed, I hope that answered your question.
I agree with you.
All right, is that everyone? It's my turn. Happy birthday to Commissioner Henry, who was born in St. Patrick's Day. And as my, one of my older brothers told her, she was the best gift that ever came she was the best gift that ever came into our family, or one of the best gifts. And I certainly, I certainly would have to say I could not agree with him more. So he was definitely right. And that concludes my remarks for tonight. Mr. Manager?
I do have two, just two items. The first item is that we will be meeting with a faith group. I invited the faith group to meet with me, members of the Realtors Association and the Chamber of Commerce next week. We're gonna try to have a conversation to bring back to you all on how to deal with the linkage fee and some of the things that we've recommended to the groups. But we are gonna be meeting with them next week. We've invited four individuals from each one of those groups to talk about. We are bringing the linkage fee information back to you all, and that was one of the things that we're going to do. Also, at two different times, I know for sure Commissioner Paris will be going up Tallahassee, and I will be going up to Tallahassee. I don't know if Commissioner May and Commissioner Cantu had discussed about. I don't know if you all are following through to still go up there to Tallahassee. But there are a couple of items that we're gonna be looking at that are part of the discussion points for property taxes, local business taxes, enterprise fund transfer, utility service, and community redevelopment agencies that you all have been probably getting information from. So just wanted you to keep abreast of those items. And if you need any information from us, if you're going up there, just let us know. But I do know that you have been confirmed, and I know that you and Commissioner Cantu have been talking with Pam to probably get confirmed as well to attend.
Commissioner May, are you going on Volusia Day?
I'm considering it, yes.
Okay. Because I'm considering it, but it's actually my birthday. And I would actually like to maybe go another day besides Volusia Day up there. Because you really can't get nothing done on Volusia Day in the first place. But, yeah, yeah, okay.
All right.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday, Commissioner Henry. And I also wanted to let the commission members know that we did receive a draft grant agreement from the county for the first step shelter earlier this week. We've started reviewing it, and we'll be looking at it. It's a three-party agreement that's drafted with the city, the county, and first step shelter. So we'll be looking at it with Mr. Fiecher and also the executive director of the first step shelter. And hopefully, we'll be bringing it back to you the next meeting. Also, coming next meeting will be the proposed contract with the consultant for the redistricting services for you to look at.
Okay, thank you. Very good. All right, we'll hear from the residents of Daytona Beach.
Okay. Our first speaker, Richard Squallant. Is he still here? Okay. Amy Pyle? Left? Okay. John Nicholson?
John, John has left? Oh.
And on deck is Reverend Nancy Griswold.
At least we're not at 3:30 in the morning anymore. John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. If you look at the city manager's program, and it talks about the summer camp, all right? Several years ago, the state asked the cities and the counties to look at the forests and the state properties to see if there's some activities that we could do on those properties. Those counties suggested the off-road cars, all right, to dig up the property and whatnot, and that didn't go far. So when I was a kid, we went to summer camp, all right? My sister went to Maine, I went to North Carolina. You spent two weeks. I slept at a teepee. You know, all the good stuff that you do when you go on camp. Although we're doing this, I did this every summer at our school. All the public schools were open up during the summer, and you did all of these things at the school. So it's not really going to summer camp. So I was wondering if we could build a summer camp in our forest. 15% of our city is in the forest, state forest, believe it or not. We go to the forest. So why not build a camp out there and have our children be able to camp overnight for two weeks a summer? And we just end up with like four or five sessions out there where the kids could go out camping. And we could port this by building it in such a fashion that all of our nine major events, people can camp out there, and these money and that profit allows our kids to go free and afford the camp here. So this, our kids don't pay anything because it's paid for by the campers, the bikers, the race car fans and whatnot that would use it during their major events. So I think if we could do that, it'd be great for us to see. Secondly, you know about the event that happened on boardwalk? This is the second time in five years when they invade Daytona Beach. So the county, I was at the county yesterday, and they're creating, they're asking their staff to lean to a way of bling with this because they have the bee. And this is the second time it happened on the boardwalk. So I'm asking the city to work with the county to see if we can do something like we did when we had the truckers, when we had the problem with the truckers. All the Ocean Cities got together and created laws and new ways to deal with it. The county looking into it. I would ask we join with the county to make sure that we can do as much as we can that it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
John, I like that idea, but we can't do that. That's the state's park. But I love the idea of the park.
No, no, no. We asked, because they asked us about five, 10 years ago, what could be done, rather than just have it send to nothing?
They asked about it?
They asked the cities of the state and the counties what could be done.
Why don't you ask Commissioner Cantu to look into that and help you?
I don't care who looks into it.
Well, she's got the insight.
If we could do that, I think it'd be great for our kids.
I like that, actually. I think it'd be, I think our kids use the resources in our community. I don't care what they are. And camping is something that's valuable. Okay.
Our next speaker is Reverend Nancy Griswold. And on deck is Jim Swear. Is he still here? No.
Good evening. I am Reverend Nancy Griswold, and I'm with the faith organization. And I'd first like to thank you for your feedback that you just gave tonight. We take what you say very seriously. And I'd like to apologize if you feel like we have been harassing. Sometimes I think that comes because we don't get answers back. And we would like to hear from you. We would like to dialogue with you. And we would like to be part of helping solutions, make solutions for this community. I would like to invite each one of you to meet with us, to discuss your concerns, discuss the things that are bothering you about the way we handle things, so that we can have a conversation and begin to work together in a way that will be productive for both us and for all of you. I want to thank you for your time. We appreciate what you have done, especially for all the leadership you have taken in affordable housing. I have been working on this for six years. Yes, it's been frustrating. It's been frustrating to come for six years. But I know that our people need it. It's a shame that we have so many people can't afford to live in this great community. So again, thank you for your work, and I hope we can work together to make that happen. I thank you for being willing to look at linkage fees so that we can fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that will help bring affordable housing to our community. I know that's not something a lot of people would like, but after a lot of research, it is what we have found is the best solution and a solution that will work for this community. So thank you for being willing to help us with that and to help this community. To answer the question about us inviting other people, I just texted Jessica. We have invited the people from Orange, and they are coming. We have invited people from the county, and several of them are coming. And we invite these people every year. I know it sounds sometimes like we pick on Daytona Beach. And maybe that's because you're the ones who respond to us in ways that other people don't. You're the ones that we count on, and you're the ones that have been doing the work. So thank you for that. Our NEOMIA Action Assembly is next Tuesday, and you are once again invited. We would love for you to be there, to be in conversation with us about why that's not something like you can do.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is expired.
Thank you. I hope to see you there.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker, is it Roy?
Yep.
And on deck, is there a Jemmy Adele still here?
Hello, hello, hello. Once again, I'd like to thank God for saving Donald Trump to make America great again. And thank Elon Musk for fighting all the corruption fraud in our federal, state, and local governments. Speaking of fraud, I was thinking about, what? $33 million grant for a baseball field that already has everything it needs to have a few games a year. I'm from Darville, Iowa, full of dreams. I like a baseball game, but who's getting rich? Yeah. I'd like to know, where is the money going? Are the bases gonna be solid gold? Come on, give me a break. And Bike Week, Bike Week, once again, beachside was jam-packed, full of people, yet nobody's smart enough to open up Harvey. You close down ISB, but nobody's smart enough to open up Harvey and just put a little booth there, get 20 bucks a pop for like 300 parking spots? And look at our boardwalk. Nothing's there. Nothing. I mean, you should bring back the parking, the Golden Goose, and the heart of Daytona. Bring back the parking and driving on the beach. I mean, ridiculous. And the sidewalks. We can't even get new sidewalks on U.S. 1. I know, I'm supposed to call DOT. Yeah. Ridiculous. Almost the most dangerous part of U.S. 1 in America is Daytona Beach. Yet, what part of town has got brand-new sidewalks? Streets, lampposts, recreational center? You know what part of town does? Only one part of the town getting the grease for, what? 15 years now? Ridiculous. Once again, Doge needs to come here and evaluate what's been going on here. 33 million for a ballpark? Come on, somebody's getting rich. Who gets the swimming pool this month? Come on, you know something's going on. What's a fraudster?
My pool needs re-surfaced, and I sure do get no money out of...
And on deck is Mary. Is it Charnati? Okay.
Evening. My name is Abel Ademi, 1236 88, Daytona Beach. I'm a local builder here in Daytona Beach. I meet specific needs. People come to me, they want a house. They, instead of an old house, I said, okay, what do you qualify for? I'll build you a brand-new house in the neighborhood. So 202 and 260 gardens, where two of those properties, two buyers came to me. I said, okay, I have this land, you want this neighborhood? They were looking at LPGA. And I said, okay, you're not gonna afford that. I can build you a bigger house, affordable in neighborhoods. So we signed on. Got my elevations done by Halifax Land Survey. We did the form board, poured our foundation, did the elevations, the, what is it called? Base floor elevation. It came 9.6 and 9.5, which is about five inches above what it's supposed to be. So we continued, finished the work, calling back final elevations. Said he was retired. He wouldn't answer the phone. So I reached out to a different company. They came out, different elevation survey. The guy that came out, came up with 8.6 and 8.5. So I'm six inches below the base floor elevation. Submitted, this is city said, I cannot get a CO, some FEMA rule, whatever. So I've been trying. I'm not trying to die in a courtroom trying to figure out what's going on with this. I just need to know what's going on. How can this be prevented from happening to anybody else? Because this has never happened before. So I'm six inches below the base floor elevation. My two buyers are backed out because the city put a sign on there that struggles unsafe for whatever reason, you know? So now I'm only with the option of maybe probably figure out to rent them out and just keep them, which is what I do. So I'm just trying to figure out, is there anything the city is doing to stop this from happening to anybody else? Because it can happen again, you know? You go behind the electricians, the plumbers, and the mechanicals. But nothing is being done about the survey. That's a critical part of the construction because we're here now. The house is finished, and we're just finding this out. Nothing I did wrong. Nothing. So I just wanna know what can be done.
Our next speaker is Mary Charnati, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you again. Late night. Lot of valuable stuff, though. I am also, I'm 1508 Virginia Avenue, Daytona Beach. And I am also a very faithful member of the faith organization. So while it may appear at times that we may be aggressive, I think what it is, our passion comes through the voices that we represent. So no different than represent yours, we represent ours. We certainly like to make sure that our voices are heard so that we are representing those that we represent. So tonight, I just want to say, yes, the linkage fees are very important. We have a huge deficit to cover. And I'm gonna go over a little math problem that I see every day. I'm a property manager. And let's just take somebody that is going to be moving into one of these commercial buildings that are being built, and they're gonna be working there for $18 an hour. $18 an hour on a yearly basis is $37,445 a year. Gross. That's $3,120 a month. In order to qualify for a $1,500 apartment, you need to be able to make $3,750. So you already have a deficit. And let's add our utilities and our living expenses and our medical insurance. And then wonder why we have an affordable housing issue in our area. So unless we can increase our salaries or be able to find a way to fund some way to cover that deficit, I'm afraid that our homeless situation will only get worse because we have to be able to find a way to cover that. The problem needs a solution. Linkage fees is something that you have supported us in being able to create the fund, and now we have to fund it. And we hope that you're going to be able to support us in going forward with that. So yes, next Tuesday night is a very important night for all of us So yes, next Tuesday night is a very important night for all of us, as we represent our people and your people, and we ask for you to come out and be part of this community, not to push your back up against the wall, but to be able to join us in something that means a lot to all of us. So please show, we hope to see you there. We have a whole lot to accomplish, and we want to do it together. Thank you.
Location?
6:30 tomorrow night, Our Lady of Hope, Port Orange.
Next Tuesday.
I'm sorry, the 26th.
Yep, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Please say tomorrow.
Did I, what did I?
You said tomorrow.
Oh, it's a long day.
Yeah, I'm trying to go to Krispy Kreme, but I don't look like I'm going to make it.
So is it March 26th, you said?
March 25th.
25th, okay.
25th, 6:30 PM, and it is at Our Lady of Hope.
Okay, thank you.
We would be very happy to see you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Larry McDermott.
Greetings, everyone. Marjorie Johnson, Daytona Beach. I'm here tonight to tell all of you, it's incumbent on all of you to do your job that we are paying you to. I like to thank Monica and Ken Spickler, but I'm standing in the job that you're doing. Whenever I have a question, you are called, and I get answers. I'd just like to say tonight that I would like to see you all put their agenda back the way it was when you guys here, Mayor Henry, we were speaking before you all, you kept changing around. But now, if you go to any city, whether it's Holly Hill, Daytona, or Port Orange, the residents are speaking first, and then they sum it up in the end. I am the one who got the residents put back in the meeting, because you all were having a speech after adjournment. All these changes to face when you got into office. So we need to do the people's work. We have commissioners who are not even meeting with anybody in my zone. Paula Reed, she had me to meet, she did the show. She said, oh, let's set another meeting, and she never did. That was four years ago. So injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, and we are paying your salaries, and you are here to do the people's work. I advocated for a special election, because you're in the very seat that you're sitting in, Mayor Henry, that's how you got here. I advocated for Derek Future to come. I advocated for Derek Future to get his job, because we never had an African-American city manager. We want all of you to do your job, and we want you to stop playing games. Do your job that you're getting paid to do. You don't work, go home and lay up and retire. So we are getting sick and tired, being sick and tired of all of this injustice that's going on there. False statements being put in the meeting by Commissioner Reed, lies that you're repeating that other people said at the seafood festival. Ignorance is bliss. You want to be ignorant, this is not the place for it. You are paying your salary, so just be quiet and shut up and do your job. If you don't want to do your job, leave, because people are getting tired.
Your time almost up now.
No, my time is not up. I got 20 minutes. Don't be rude. Just wait until I finish my statement.
I will, yes, ma'am.
You are getting paid to do your job.
Yes, ma'am.
So make sure you do it. So we're not going to sit here and be insulted by y'all, because you think you can talk to people anyhow, but you can't. Do your job.
Yes, ma'am. I miss you too, Ms. Johnson, glad you're here.
Our next speaker is Larry McDermott, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Hey, I just got a phone call from my wife. She has approved the capital budget item called Larry's Mobile Fishing Unit. That's the good news. The bad news is, there's no reserve to pay for it. Does that help you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Larry McDermott, 1016 Bel Air. Look, real quick, Dan Bolerjack, is anybody knew Dan Bolerjack?
I remember Dan.
Yeah, Dan, he's retired now from his practice, CPA. He and I were talking the other day in the gym, and said that, what happened to the Citizens' Budget Review Committee? We had one for years, back when the budget was really tight and we were in a lot worse economy. We would get together, we were seven of us, and we would meet with the financial people. And at that time, I think it was Jim Manning, that's how far it goes back. And then after that, I can't remember the lady's name that took over. But the process helped us be able to iron out those situations for the commissioners not only, but for the citizens well. Okay? So this is kind of timely, because I was going to come here anyway to talk about it. But as of tonight, I can see whether there are inconsistencies or problems in the understanding of the budget. And Dan knows the budget really well, as we just for a number of years. So that's my proposal. I hope that y'all consider it, and that's it. Thank you very much.
I do remember that.
Our final speaker tonight is Doyle Lewis.
I came here to talk about the parks. There's never enough parks. I'm not talking about automobile parking, I'm talking about parks for people that want to walk, jog, exercise, bring their kids to. You're never going to have enough parks, no matter what, because that's a big issue. Parks where you can walk, ride your bicycles, and with age, your eyesight gets worse and worse and worse. Last year, I had an incident at work. I'm mostly blind now. It's from overseas container unloading from China boxes, and I've lost my eye and most of my eyesight.
Seriously? I'm sorry to hear that.
I lost half my hearing, too, because of my age. So even though it looks like I'm looking at you, I'm not. That's why I speak more and more now. So let's take care of the kids, make sure there's parks in the area. It doesn't matter if there's parks, it's federal parks, doesn't matter if it's county parks, it doesn't matter if it's city parks. Make sure that there is a place for happyness outside other than locked in a building, because the jail's full of young people. Trust me, I just came from there. The Hope community, the faith community, the biggest reason, and I was in most of the meetings with this commission, the reason why the Hope and the faith organization, that's why the First Step Shelter exists. That's the people of this community. Does anybody hear me? There's 33 religious groups in this community that is for a shelter. Does anybody understand? Yes, I was there. I was there constantly. That's 33 groups, religious groups, yes. It's printed. It was in paperwork, it ain't just talk. So that shelter for the homeless needs to be supported by Volusia County. Thank you.